I will now call this meeting of the Pinellas County School Board, January 24th, 2023, to order. As you can see, we have six school board members in attendance and Mrs. Long will be attending with us virtually. Mrs. Long, are you with us? Can we hear her?
That's your computer.
Yes, I am.
Fantastic, thank you. This evening's invocation will be given by Pastor Joe Glimp from Prince of Peace Lutheran Church in Largo. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Vice Chair, Ms. Laura Heint, and the National Anthem sung by Countryside High School Choir under the direction of Ms. Christy Jackson. Please stand and remain standing until the anthem has ended. Pastor Glimp, would you please share the invocation?
Let us pray. God of all grace, we thank you for Pinellas County, our home, and for our friends and family you've given us, for all our many blessings. We thank you, oh God, that you we already are in a new semester of the school year, have witnessed children and youth honing skills with words, numbers, and sciences, athletes and artists investing their talents, many more developing new skills they didn't know they have, and that will serve them far past graduation. Thank you for the opportunity to teach the children and youth you have placed into our care. Bless parents, we pray with a resolve to create a firm foundation for learning in their homes. Bless our teachers and administrators, our support staffs, those board these board leaders who give their lives over to the task of fashioning a positive learning environment for every day. Grant them patience for the hurdles they face, determination in the challenges that come, and joy in the successes along the way. And bless our children and youth. Give them strength to resist the temptations to walk where it is unsafe and courage to withstand the pressure to do what is unwise. Stir their imaginations, oh God. Encourage their curiosity and willingness to learn and inspire in them open hearts to serve and walk with one another from kindergarten to high school and beyond. Hear our prayers, oh God, for you are indeed our rock and our redeemer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Ms. Jackson, would you please introduce the second song?
Yes, I am Christy Jackson from Countryside High School, the chorus director here. Thank you guys so much for having us. Our next piece is "Sinister Man." Please enjoy.
Sinister man, sinister man, oh sinister man, sinister man, sinister man, oh sinister man, all on that day.
Oh sinister man, where you gonna run to? Oh sinister man, where you gonna run to? Oh sinister man, where you gonna run to? All on that day. Run to the rock, it was burning. Run to the scene, it was burning. Run to the moon, it was bleeding. All on that day.
Run to the Lord, Lord, won't you hide me? Run to the Lord, Lord, won't you hide me? Run to the Lord, Lord, won't you hide me? All on that day. And the Lord says, sinister man, you should have been a praying sinister man. You should have been a praying sinister man. You should have been a praying all on that day. All on that day. Sinister man, sinister man, oh sinister man, sinister man, sinister man, oh sinister man, sinister man, sinister man, oh sinister man, all on that day.
Thank you so much, that was outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and to the entire group. It's a beautiful performance. I'd like to introduce today's video. Westgate Elementary School students have been working together through engineering and design as they prepare for the first LEGO League Robotics Competition. Let's take a look.
Right there, okay, three, two, one, go.
Every year, First LEGO League, it's a different theme, and this year it's called Super Power. So all of the students are learning different forms of energy, and the robot game is based on different forms of energies. Some students are doing like the oil rig mission. Some students are doing the watch TV mission, which is about rechargeable TV. And so that's how we tie energy into it. We want to learn through play, and that's how we bring that in with First LEGO League.
I love STEM because I love working with Legos, and technology is one of my favorite things, and I love to code.
Earlier this afternoon, we had Kathleen Beckman, she's the Vice Mayor of Clearwater. She came and talked to us about solar energy.
Great, good job.
I think it's just a win to see adults who are excited about solar power and solar panels, to be able to ask, answer questions. And I think it'd be really great to start thinking about electricity, how we use electricity in the house, and then demonstrate with panels.
What's coming off these solar panels?
They were really interested in how the solar panels stop moving. So it really demonstrated that it's generating electricity when it's in the sun and not generating when it's not.
And then we need to go, and then we need to move.
Yes.
So they're learning the engineering process, they're learning to work together as a team, and they're learning to program, and they're learning to iterate their design. So if the programming doesn't work, they go back, they change it.
I've learned that it's important to know that sometimes you'll need help.
It's actually really hard to try and get it right because it's a lot of all the mistakes. You have to correct the mistakes, and there's so many possible ways that it goes wrong. But you keep on working, and when you get it right, it's super exciting because then, you know, I don't have to use those mistakes anymore.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Now, our Public Information Officer, Isabella Mascarenas, will introduce our professional and community organizations that are in attendance today.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hendrick and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Lindsay Blackenbaker, Executive Director, and Nancy Velardi, President. From the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, we have Maria Athenassoulis. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome students Cassandra Scheller, Ariana Vizcaya Vargas, Elise Wright, from Countryside High School, and their principal, Taylor Henderson.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ariana Vizcaya, and I'm in 11th grade.
Good evening. My name is Cassandra Scheller, and I am in 12th grade.
Good evening. My name is Elise Wright, and I'm in 12th grade.
Thank you for providing us the time this evening to share with you some of the awesome things that are happening at the historic Countryside High School, under Area 1's, under the leadership of Dr. Christian Gonzalez, Area 1 Superintendent, and our principal, Mr. Taylor Henderson. Our school vision is 100% student success, and our school mission is to prepare all Cougars for college, career, and life.
Our beloved CHS is in its 44th year and has developed rich school traditions, supportive alumni, strong community partnerships, and attractive academic programs. These traditions include our annual Fall Festival, our annual regionally-known College and Career Fair, and many other extracurriculars unique to Countryside. Our beautiful campus is on the corner of State Road 580 and McMullen Booth Road, and our school grounds are regarded as one of the most pristine in Pinellas, adorned with native palms, oak trees, dogwood trees, and large outdoor green spaces.
New facilities updates include a recent installation of a new air conditioning chiller in August of 2022. And thanks to Pinellas County Schools and additional funds for Dr. Gonzalez, a new floor and a large concourse area. The theater received a new projection lineage system in 2020, and a new stage in 2022, and we're known to numerous evening performances in our outdoor Cougars Art Pavilion. We also recently completed a tuck-pointing project that will keep our beautiful castle strong for years to come.
Home to the 10-time state champion Cougars, Countryside High School is proud of what we have accomplished in 44 years in northeastern Clearwater. Our school continues to partner with both the city of Clearwater and the city of Safety Harbor. Countryside High School is active on the Clearwater Achievement Council, and it is a proud member of the City of Safety Harbor Chamber of Commerce. Our Cougars are very active in both of our home communities and partnerships with both cities. Famous alumni include former NBA players Matthew Geiger and Andrew DeClerc, as well as the current city of Clearwater Mayor Frank Hibbard. Former Cougar and current Olympian gold medalist of the Florida Gator swimmer Bobby Fink recently won two gold medals at the 2021 Tokyo Olympics.
Countryside High School has a current population of approximately 1,800 students, and continues to be one of the most highly-selected schools this past year with nearly 600 incoming freshmen. Many of our current students had parents or family members who attended Countryside High School, and we have over 20 staff members that are alumni. It is truly a great time to be a Cougar.
Our main feeder school remains Safety Harbor Middle School, but we also have many students from surrounding schools such as Carways Middle, Palm Harbor Middle, Clearwater Fundamental, and Oak Grove Middle. We frequently participate in joint performing art events with our feeder schools including Safety Harbor Elementary and Leila Davis Elementary.
Countryside High School's diverse student population remains one of our school's unique strengths and includes 27% Hispanic, 10% African-American, 54% Caucasian, 3% Asian, and 6% other students. The variety and diversity of our students' ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds creates a warm culture that can be felt on our school grounds. Our school Positive Behavior Program is called ROR and outlines expected behaviors for each area of our school. Positive incentives are provided for academic and behavioral improvements and success, including the creation of our new school store using Cougar coins. Countryside High School this year formed a student-led lighthouse team and our amazing sponsor, Miss Young, that utilizes the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. This leadership group has been transformational in organizing pep rallies, parent and student nights focused on culture and climate.
Countryside High School has over 50 school clubs and outside activities for students to engage in, and has one of the larger civic footprints amongst the region's high schools. Our Cougars are involved in civic and service projects throughout Pinellas County, gaining invaluable leadership skills while making a lasting contribution. We currently offer over 27 advanced placement courses on campus, 11 dual enrollment opportunities through St. Petersburg College and Pinellas Technical College, as well as offering three Cambridge Aces classes in 2023. Countryside High School offers over 18 industry certifications to support our students' post-secondary careers.
Last year, our students earned nearly 800 industry certifications in areas such as Microsoft, Business Series, Adobe Premiere, and Photoshop, cybersecurity, and many more. Our school has one of the largest Avid program enrollments in each grade level, and the presence of Avid strategies are felt daily in our campus. Our school-wide academic strategy this year is Avid Focus No-Taking.
Our visual arts programs have had numerous students win the prestigious Morin Art Award exhibit and the Scholastic Art Award in Visual Arts. Our theater, choral, and band programs continue to excel with our band program receiving a superior rating at the Florida Bandmasters Association Marching Band Assessment. We also have had an in-house, we also have an in-house rock band named Public Education that frequently plays in our mall area. Our amazing Drama Troop 900 continues to excel and is preparing for an exciting spring production of SpongeBob SquarePants. Our outstanding choir, under the direction of Mrs. Jackson, continues to have numerous performances in our greater school community.
Our unmatched Institute for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Magnet Program has grown over the last 12 years and currently has over 500 students enrolled. iSTEM strands for student interest include cybersecurity, digital programming, virtual reality and augmented reality solutions, building construction materials, technology, digital design, and web application development. We are hopeful that the iSTEM program will one day become a district-wide application program so that all students can access the amazing real-world applications it offers.
Athletic success is part of the culture at Countryside High School, as we have two Olympic gold medalists in swimming. Our athletic program has won 10 state championships in soccer, softball, cross-country, tennis, and wrestling, and we're hopeful to add to the list in coming years.
Two of our swimmers were multi-event state champions, as Andrew Taylor and Summer Cardwell both defended their state championships this year. Both student athletes were named the Florida Dairy Farmers Incorporated Swimmers of the Year for 2021, and Summer repeated this recognition this year as being named the Florida Miss Swimming.
Thank you so much for allowing us to share a few highlights from the real CHS. As you can tell, we have a lot to be proud of at Countryside High School. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I have to say, you do have a lot to be proud of. Those are some outstanding statistics, and you all did a fantastic job. I'd like to thank Principal Henderson from Countryside High School as well for being here this evening. Can we give them a round of applause? They did a fantastic job. Thank you all for being here, and we appreciate the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Go Cougars, yeah. Thank you. And we will now begin the business portion of our meeting. Please let the notes reflect. The board member Long is joined is with us virtually, and all votes will reflect a seven-member vote. Mr. Hendrick, are there any recommended amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is one amendment. It was posted online earlier today. It's item 4.5, a special recognition of Dr. Gus A. Stavros.
Thank you very much. As board chair, I find good cause to amend the agenda as described by Superintendent Hendrick. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended? I have a movement of approval by Mrs. Heint and a second by Mrs. Cook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing no opposed, it passes unanimously. We will move on to our special order of agenda. May I have a movement for approval for item 4.1, the Proclamation of National African American History Month, February 2023? I have a movement for approval by Mrs. Edmond, and a second by Mrs. Heint. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call up Mr. Matt Bloom, our social studies specialist for high school, and Dr. Clark, who's a member, a teacher in our district and a member of the Commissioner's African American History Task Force, to present this item.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, school board members, Mr. Hendrick and staff. As a high school social studies specialist, I'm happy to be able to present for African American History Month. African American history-related benchmarks or standards can be found in many social studies courses, but there are also standards-aligned ways to infuse African American history into other courses. To help me present this afternoon, as was mentioned, is Dr. LaFrance Clark, longtime teacher at Pinellas Park High School. Dr. Clark has been a presenter on behalf of our district at the Florida Commissioner of Education's African American History Task Force, Summer Institute, and a regular participant for many years, and I'm grateful for his help today in presenting to you all.
The Commissioner of Education's African American History Task Force supports districts in implementing the teaching of the history of African American peoples and the contribution of African Americans to society in accordance with the state statutes, rules, and standards. Since 2015, the African American History Task Force has recognized Pinellas County as an exemplary school district for our standards-aligned implementation of African American history. To date, the approved exemplary status has only been awarded to 11 school districts in the state of Florida. As mentioned, I've been a presenter and a contributor at the Summer Institute, as well as a regular participant. Attending the Summer Institute has given me access to high-quality resources and the ability to meet other educators and members of the Commissioner's Education's African American History Task Force. The task force supports teachers to engage their students by using local African American museums and heritage trails to foster learning. These experiences have enhanced my ability to help students connect with African American history locally and nationally. Early this year, Matt nominated me through the African American History Task Force for a possible role in the Florida Department of Education Initiative that pulls together a work group of educators and content experts to review and make recommendations related to the state standards on African American history and required instruction in the state statute. I'm happy to announce that I've been selected to participate on that committee and begin working with the Department of Education in February.
Also, also, for the third year in a row, Pinellas has been invited to help develop and support the Commissioner of Education's Task Force in their Summer Institute planning. The Summer Institute is something that's open to all teachers statewide, and ensures awareness of state requirements on African American history while providing tools and resources to support Florida's school districts. Pinellas County School celebrates the many achievements and contributions of local, state, and national African American figures throughout the year, through our standards, but particularly during the month of February, National African American History Month. This time provides an opportunity for students to continue to learn about the struggles, successes, and contributions African Americans have made throughout our nation's history. Lastly, as we acknowledge the national theme for African American History Month today, the state of Florida has kicked off its theme, which is celebrating the achievements of African American Floridians, and the Florida Department of Education and Volunteer Florida 2023 Black History Month Student Art and Essay contests under that theme are underway until Tuesday, February 7. And details for anyone who's interested can be found generally at flgov.com and then directly at the state's FloridaBlackHistory.com websites. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to Dr. Clark, and thank you, Mr. Bloom. We're going to ask Ms. Board Member Edmond to please read the proclamation.
Proclamation, African American History Month, February 2023. Whereas during African American History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas, in 1915, Dr. Carter Goodwin-Woodson, noted black scholar and son of formerly enslaved parents, founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12, 1926, and for many years, the second week of February, chosen so as to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, was celebrated by African Americans in the United States. And whereas, in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as African American History Month, and is now celebrated across North America. And whereas, 2023's theme, Black Resistance, offers a rich opportunity for acknowledging and exploring the legacy of black leaders, faith institutions, cultural centers, medical professionals, and historians in sustaining, fortifying, and respecting the quest for civil, social, and human rights. And whereas, well, in, now, therefore, the school board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize February 2023 as African American History Month and urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed, this 24th day of January 2023.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion by board members? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve item 4.1, the Proclamation of National African American History Month, February 2023. With the motion by Ms. Edmond and a second by Ms. Heint, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the motion to approve item 4.1 has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve item 4.2, the proclamation recognizing February 6 through February 10, 2023, as Student Services Week?
I believe that we adopt the proclamation, the Student Services Week.
Second.
I have a motion for approval by Mrs. Cook and a second by Ms. Edmond. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call up Executive Director of Student Services Donna Sicilian to introduce this item as we celebrate the work of our Student Services staff in our schools.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hendrick, school board members, and staff. I really appreciate the opportunity to come forward to you every year at this time and bring the proclamation for Student Service Week, which is the week of February 6 through the 10th this year. And this is an opportunity for us to express appreciation and gratitude for the work that all of our Student Services staff do across the district. So these staff include our school psychologists, counselors, social workers, nurses, prevention staff. And every year, I try to think of like a creative, interesting way to bring attention to the work that they do. So this year, what I was thinking about- So this year, what I was thinking about, I went to a concert last Friday night and it was a Bob Seger tribute band. Now, let me tell you, none of the staff in my office even knew who Bob Seger was, but I'm hoping there's a few in my demographic here in the room that will know who Bob Seger was. And so I was, I really enjoyed the concert. And after the concert, I was watching as they started to pull down and tear down the stage. I also was paying attention to the tech booth in the back of the building. And I thought about these roadies, as they're so-called. And I thought about how our student service staff in a lot of ways are like roadies. So how are they like roadies, you ask? Let me tell you. First of all, they are essential. Without these individuals, the work would just not happen. They work behind the scenes, but they're very, very important. They're not the star, but they are the people who set the stage for students to learn, making sure that their physical, social, emotional, and mental needs are met. They make everything possible that goes on for students and staff every day in our schools. They're used to, quote, roughing it. They're very resilient. They have a lot of stories to tell, but they're wise enough not to tell them. They often go underappreciated. And they are the ones who really don't win the Grammys or the awards, but they ensure that the stars and our teachers and our students are able to do the things they do. And when you ask a roadie why they do this work, it's not for the money, it's not an easy job. They do it for the love of the music. And I don't think there's a student service personnel person out there in our district that wouldn't say that they don't do this work solely for their love of students. So I appreciate your bringing forth this proclamation and recognizing these individuals and the work that they do, the essential work they do for education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sicilian. And I'd like to invite Board Member Meyer to please read the proclamation.
Proclamation, Student Services Week. Whereas each and every school day, student service professionals, including school counselors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, educational diagnosticians, and prevention staff work together to assist students in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and competencies to make well-reasoned and healthy lifelong decisions. And whereas, it is important to recognize that academic performance is impacted by developmental factors and school and community factors. And whereas, research demonstrates the value in providing supportive programs and services in order to increase student achievement. The services provided by student services professionals enables the students to learn and the teachers to teach and strengthens the bond between families and schools. And whereas, we acknowledge that the student services professionals have the necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities to reduce barriers to learning and assist classroom teachers, parents, and community agencies in providing a safe and positive learning environment for all children. And whereas, we acknowledge that the student services professionals contribute to the educational success and personal development of all students. And whereas, we realize that the student services professionals provide services directly to teachers, parents, and to the community. They also serve as a resource to school improvement teams to facilitate school improvement plans. Now, therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize the week of February 6th through 10th, 2023, as Student Services Week for Pinellas County Schools and appreciates the significant contributions made by school counselors, nurses, social workers, psychologists, educational diagnosticians, prevention staff, and members of the crisis response team. Signed, this 24th day of January 2023.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion from board members? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve item 4.2, the proclamation recognizing February 6th through 10th, 2023, as Student Services Week. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to approve item 4.2 passes unanimously. We will now hear item 4.3, Student Services Employee of the Year. Mr. Hendrick, will you please introduce that?
Yes, Madam Chair, before I do, I'll ask the board to please stand and go down to the floor. We're going to recognize an employee. So we'll give you just a moment to get down there. And this is in alignment with the recently proclaimed Student Services Week. That's coming up. We take this time to honor our Student Services Employee of the Year. And it is an honor to do so tonight and to also acknowledge the work of all of our Student Services employees across our district. It's always a difficult task to pick one, but I think we've certainly picked an outstanding example of the field of student services staff this year. So I'm going to ask our Executive Director for Student Services, Donna Sicilian, to once again make this introduction.
Hello again. So remember I said the roadies never get an award? Well, that's where they part ways, because we do award every year the Student Services Employee of the Year Award. And like Mr. Hendrick said, what's so important about this is that this individual is always chosen by a group of their peers because the peers feel that this person very well represents the work that they do, the values that they hold, the core values of our district, and how they play those out every day in serving our students and our staff. So this year, the committee wisely chose Ms. Deborah Holland, who's here with her principal, assistant principal, and the supervisor for guidance, as well as some of her family members, because they're very excited that she has received this well-deserved honor. And I just want to mention a couple of things that Deborah Holland has done above and beyond in her role as a school counselor at Blanton Elementary that have brought her to the committee's attention so that they chose her for this award. She really exhibits characteristics of caring and respectful relationships with all stakeholders. She hosts counselor interns, serves as a new counselor mentor, assists the counseling department with writing curriculum. She ensures that students are in the SAVE Club, which is Students Against Violence Everywhere, and that they're actively involved, rather, in school-wide and community activities. She is consistently diplomatic and highly effective at her job. Some of the things that her principal and assistant principal had wanted to point out is that she served as a mentor for students and pumped them up to pass the FSA. This year, she's serving as a mentor for 5th grade African American girls who scored a 1.3, 2.1, and/or a 2.2 on the ELA last year. She created a schedule for guidance lessons and follows it, as well as implementing her curriculum. She just goes above and beyond working with the families, with the students. I know we have a little video that we're going to show, but before they play it, she was sharing with me right before the meeting that we, our wonderful communications department put this together and had it on the website. And she has heard from several former students, because she's done this for a while now, that approached her after seeing that and just wanting her to know the impact that she had on their lives, and some of them that are parents now even. So if we could show her video. And this year, I'm here to tell you that the 2223 Student Service Employee of the Year for all of Pinellas County Schools is your school counselor, Deborah Holland.
I was so shocked, but so excited, though. I mean, I did not expect this at all. It was, it's great, it feels great. It means a lot to me. I've been here at the same school for 27 years and just try to make a difference in these kids' life and be there for them and just to be honored with this award is amazing. If you just can make even the smallest difference in one person's life, you've done your job.
So, thank you so much. Congratulations, Deborah.
So congratulations to Mrs. Holland and Blanton Elementary. Thank you for nominating her. And we look forward to celebrating all of our Student Services personnel in February, but each and every day. And our board will come back up today, and I'll ask Mr. McCullough, our contents specialist for industrial, technology, and public service education, to approach the podium or the lectern. And Mrs. Chair, we'll pass it back to you for our next item.
Yes, we are now going to hear item 4.4, the recognition of first responders appreciation week, January 23rd through the 28th, 2023. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to you for the introduction.
Good evening, Ms. Kane, board members, Mr. Hendrick, staff. My name is Mike McCullough. As Mr. Hendrick pointed out, I probably have the longest title in the school system. But year-round, first responders, police, fire, and emergency medical responders brave challenges so the rest of us may stay safe. In honor of their hard work and dedication, every year, we honor and celebrate these heroes for selflessly protecting and serving our communities. They are the first to run toward danger and shepherd all others to safety without thinking, without thought of their own well-being. Each day, the risks presented to this elite group grow increasingly more severe and all too numerous. Yet they remain vigilant and ready to answer the call. This year, the week of January 23rd through the 27th is dedicated as a time formally to recognize and show appreciation for our first responders. First responders across the country put their lives on the line to keep America safe. An estimated 4.6 million people serve as career or volunteer firefighters, police, emergency medical technicians, and paramedics in the United States. Their daily jobs come with extraordinary challenges that they face with bravery and dedication. The service that police, fire, and emergency medical responders across the United States and Florida provide each and every day cannot be measured in quantifiable terms, yet has a significant and lasting impact on those they serve. Our recognition today of their service is just a small token of our esteem for their devotion these professionals display every day in protecting our community. With us today, and please stand, stay standing when you're there, is Chief Rob Williams from the Seminole Fire and Rescue Department, Lieutenant Poole from the Pinellas Park Police Department, Sergeant Thomas from the Pinellas County Sheriff's, the crew from the Largo Fire Station 41, which is right across the street. That's Brian Almond, Ryan Hidman, and Anaya Morris. And then representing the amazing group from the Pinellas County Schools, Chief Williams, Sergeant Connell, and Sergeant Colbath. And finally, also here today are students and teachers from the Pinellas Park High School's First Responders, National Guard Center for Emergency Management, and the Criminal Justice Academy. First of all, I want to say a quick thank you to Diamond Tzalowski, our resource teacher for the industrial, technology, and public service education, for her support for our criminal justice firefighter and responders program. And finally, a quick thank you to Mark Hunt, the Executive Decker of Career and Technical and Adult Education. We thank you for what you do for our department. Your passion for CTA is incredibly contagious and the amount of support that you give us is immeasurable, which is why we always enthusiastically go above and beyond for you. Please join me in showing our appreciation for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough, and thank you to all of our first responders. We simply cannot say it enough. We thank you each and every day for all of the hard work that you do in keeping all of us safe. Is there any discussion by board members? Seeing none, we'll move forward. We have 4.5. It's a special recognition of Dr. Gus A. Stavros, a leader in Pinellas County. I'm going to head, kick it to Mr. Hendrick for an introduction to.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board, for allowing the special recognition. As most of the community knows, Dr. Gustavos, a longtime supporter of Pinellas County Schools, passed away in October. But his birthday would be coming up, and the Pinellas Education Foundation, of which he founded and a building on their campus is named for, asked if we would recognize and share with the community the opportunity to support him. So I'd like to recognize the Executive Director of the Pinellas Education Foundation, Dr. Stacy Byer, who's here with us tonight. But call up to the podium, Mr. Bob McIntyre, who is a board member with the Pinellas Education Foundation for a few words about Dr. Stavros's impact in our community and for the public. Bob?
Thank you for having me here tonight. Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Mr. Hendrick and staff. My name is Bob McIntyre. I'm the founder of DiTech. Tonight, I'm here as a past chairman and board member of the Pinellas Education Foundation. The Pinellas Education Foundation is a coalition of business and community leaders who collaborate with community partners to nurture students' success in the classroom and to better prepare them from the world beyond. Tonight, we serve, excuse me, together, we serve as a catalyst for change, tackling education's most pressing challenges. The foundation is a nonprofit organization which was created to support Pinellas County's public schools, teachers, and students. For more than 35 years, our initiatives have made a measurable impact. Been on the board over 30 years and traveled over the state of Florida many times with Mrs. Cook and been outside the state. And I can tell you, I have never seen such a partnership of business, community, and education as we have in Pinellas County, and we can all be very proud of that. We've accomplished a lot together, and I'm very proud to be a part of it with you. As many of you know, the story of the Pinellas Education Foundation begins with Enterprise Village. More than 35 years ago, Dr. Gustavos led the charge, as well as raised the donated and needed funds to establish the Pinellas Education Foundation to create Enterprise Village as our first project. The rest is history. And Enterprise Village has impacted thousands of Pinellas County students and now is being replicated all over the country and around the world. There was, of course, much more to come. Take Stock in Children, Finance Park, and many other programs. And Dr. Stavros would impact the landscape of education in Pinellas County for many years to come. As you have heard, Dr. Stavros passed away in October 18, 2022. I'm here tonight to invite you to join me in celebrating his life and legacy on Wednesday, February 1st. It would have been his 99th birthday at the Stavros Institute. We'll have refreshments, and there will be a time to share memories of Gus, as well as his wife, as well as his wife Frances. The Stavros family will be in attendance, and they know that they will love to hear any of your memories of him and to celebrate his passion for education and impacting students. We invite you all, anybody that knew Dr. Stavros, or if he touched your life in any way, to join us at 3:30 on February 1st at the Stavros Institute. And again, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you so very much for being here and for giving us that announcement. We will be moving to 5.1. Our public comments on agenda items. Members of the public have three separate opportunities to address the board when we gather for a business meeting. The first is public comment on agenda items. The second is at public hearings, most of which are policies. And the last is after our meeting, when speakers may address the general business of the district. At each opportunity for public input, board members are here to listen. This is not a time for interaction, but the board will take your comments into consideration before it votes on agenda items. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. We appreciate you assisting us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment. Lastly, please note that this meeting and all public comments will be broadcast. On the internet and video will be publicly archived. Members of the public may always communicate with the board through our email address, board@pcsp.org, or by calling the board office at 727-588-6300. Thank you, Mrs. Howke. Are there any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick. We have one speaker for the agenda item. We do have several speakers who have signed up to speak to the public hearing, and they'll be called at that portion of the agenda. So our first speaker tonight is Ms. Renee Chia. Excuse me, she is speaking to item 7.4.
Thank you. Good evening. Hope you can hear me. There we go, okay. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about one of the job descriptions that I reviewed in this portion of the agenda. The job description is for a director, advanced studies, and academic excellence. Under the essential responsibilities, I recommend.
Under the essential responsibilities, I recommend removal of specific vendor, external entity names that are not other government offices, such as Avid, Cambridge International Examinations, et cetera. The reason being is with specific vendor names identified in a job description document, it creates a risk of impropriety with fairness in contracting, especially if you are sole sourcing for those vendors. As a client, as a compliance professional myself, I am just making that recommendation to change that job description. I also recommend avoiding the use of phrases such as "coordinates with the district and school staff on messaging specific to district readiness." In a job aid, this implies this individual creates a message that is the only thing allowed to be used externally, and implies a gag order on transparency of opinion of downstream staff or teachers. So I just recommend finding better language in that job description. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? Seeing none, thank you. We are going to move to item 6.1, under unfinished business. May I have a motion to approve item 6.1, the public hearing, to consider the amendment to policies 2240, controversial issues, 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips, 2510, instructional materials, including textbooks, and 2540, use of multimedia. This is the second reading. Move approval of item 6.1? I have a movement for approval by Mrs. Heine, and a second by Mrs. Cook. Mr. Hendrick, would you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And as you know, we had a first hearing, and we've workshopped this in between. And tonight, I'd like to call up Leanna Eisen, our Director of Strategic Planning and Policy, to go over the policy itself and any changes since the first in the history of this work. And then Dr. Dan Evans, our Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, to discuss some of the implementation of this policy in our district. Ms. Eisen?
Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick, staff, and community, each year, the district reviews policies in alignment with state legislation and Florida State Board of Education rule updates. The proposed amendments to these policies align with the legislation, state rules, and account for technical edits for consistent formatting. The amendments being presented to you this evening were discussed at the board workshop in October 2022 and January 2023. First reading was held during the November 15th board meeting. Since the first reading on November 15th, there have been minor formatting and grammatical updates, as well as a few substantive revisions to 2240 and 2510 based on board members' input and new understandings as a result of the Florida Department of Education's training on library and media and instructional materials. I'll summarize all of the amendments and specify which are the new revisions. The amendments to policy 2240, controversial materials, and 2510, instructional materials, update current procedures to align with the requirements of House Bill 1467 and State Board Rule 6A-7.0713, which states school boards shall adopt policy for a parent or resident of the county to object to the use of specific material, including a description of the process for addressing and resolving objections, and adopt procedures for library and media center collections and post the procedures on the website. Specifically for policy 2240, controversial issues, the amendments address the standards used to determine the appropriateness of material, the review process for controversial material, and who serves on the review and appeals committees. Since first reading, the substantive changes to policy 2240 that have been made reframe the opening statement and clarify that controversial materials have a legitimate place in instructional programs as long as they relate to the state's standards, adds two references to policy 2510, which is the policy that includes the parent or community objection process. This reference has been added at the beginning of the policy, as well as at the end of the appeals section. And last, it specifies that teachers must include a certified pre-K-12 library media technology specialist in the evaluation of the potentially controversial supplemental materials. The proposed amendment to policy 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips, aligns this policy with the associated field trip form. The form has been updated to comply with State Board Rule 6A-10.085, which requires parent-signed field trip permission forms to include whether room assignments for overnight lodging are not separated by biological sex at birth. Therefore, this policy amendment adds a bullet regarding room sharing and aligns it again to the field trip form. Additionally, the last section of this policy has been broadened to address competitive team overnight trips, where it previously was specific for cheerleading. Amendments to policy 2510, instructional materials, updates and clarifies the district's existing procedures for instructional materials that serve as a major tool for instruction, as well as library and media materials in accordance with the new state requirements. The procedures have been posted online, and the link to the procedures for library and media material is also posted and included in the revised policy. The substantive changes for 2510 that have been made since first reading include deleting the second-to-last paragraph. This procedure was duplicative to the work of the other review committees outlined in the policy, and the review committees, those same review committees also include a subject area, content area specialist. And we updated the title to the objection form referenced throughout the policy. Finally, we propose rescinding policy 2540, use of multimedia, because the contents of it are included in 2510 and controversial issues, and the media that was specified has been outdated. So that concludes our presentation of the district staff's recommended policy changes for 2240, controversial materials, 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips, 2510, instructional materials, including textbooks, and 2540, use of multimedia.
Thank you, Leanna. Wanted to thank the board members for your consideration of all of these policies, and we ask the board to support the specific recommendations made for 2240 and 2510 related to our materials, as they align to more precise district processes that we put in place and are in alignment with the evolving state requirements. I thought it might be helpful tonight if I provide some context about how these policies play out in our schools. First, our district has had policies like these for many, many years. As a result of these policies, parents can and have objected to materials for their own children and on behalf of all children in the past. Similarly, principals and teachers across many years have reviewed and discussed whether a book or an article, for instance, is appropriate for a certain grade level. As for the district's formal adopted curriculum materials, books, and materials, we have had common committees that review those materials, and we've brought those adoption recommendations to the board each year as a non-consent item on your agenda. During the past year, as state laws have become more specific around these topics, we have used all of these processes to review and recommend changes to district adopted curriculum, and in some cases, we have discontinued titles in a grade level or within our school libraries. I also want to remind the public that school and district administrators have both a right and an obligation to conduct regular reviews of materials in our schools, and schools can and have removed books as a result. In fact, over the last year, district and school administrators have exercised this right on several occasions. In addition, we implemented in this district a new process last year whereby we asked our certified library media specialists to assemble in the summer and review books and titles as a matter of good practice that have not been formally challenged, but have generated discussion in the public and in other school districts. In fact, a group of our library media specialists met this past summer, as I mentioned, and reviewed 94 book titles in our libraries for age appropriateness. That included new books that had come into the district, new books that had come into our libraries, and some that had been questioned by community members. And that team did recommend 10 titles to be weeded out of our collections or moved to our adult-only resource library. This process is something that we institute in this school district and is beyond what the state requires, and is consistent with having our certified library media specialists help us in making these decisions. Of course, keep in mind, please, that the changes to library collections are made for a variety of reasons, including titles that are just no longer relevant, books that students are not checking out, and of course, those that have been considered not age appropriate per the criteria outlined in state statute. We are often asked how we determine age appropriateness, and so I'm going to remind the board that we shared that at a board workshop last March, March of 2022, and that remains consistent with state law. In addition to library media collections, schools use our controversial materials process to review books, movies, photographs, articles, and so forth, that a teacher is considering using in their classroom, and they may potentially be offensive or not age appropriate. This is all part of an ongoing professional dialogue in our schools among teachers, library media specialists, and our school principals when potentially controversial materials are brought forward. As a recent example, we had a book that was reviewed in one of our high schools and removed by the principal. This book is not part of our district's curriculum, but was being considered to be read second semester by a teacher who chose to do so. When a parent brought that concern forward to us first semester, the principal took the time to discuss the book with the teacher and the library media specialist as outlined by the Florida DOE, and the school considered not only the potentially offensive passage, but the book in its entirety. These decisions require balancing all parts of the law, including judging books for their entire literary merit. With last week's release of new state training on controversial materials, we have now asked our schools to remove that book that I mentioned from our school libraries throughout the district, as we are erring on the side of caution per the language of the training. With the new training now available to us, and as a next step, I wanted to let the board know and the community know that the district is in the process of having all district curriculum staff, like myself, and school media specialists take part in the training, and we are asking those folks to have that training completed by honor before February 20th, which is our next teacher training, district-wide training day. Once we've all completed that training, we'll ask schools to update book inventories in their libraries and the books within our classrooms. Make sure we have a good inventory first. As part of that process, there may be additional titles that we want to bring forward that we'll have to remove per the standards and cautions outlined in the training. Of course, we will continue to follow state law and train our school and district teams in being consistent, thoughtful, and measured in our actions pursuant to these policies. Again, we thank you for your consideration of these updated policies. We ask for their approval. And as always, for board members or community members, and the public, if they have any questions, they can reach out to me directly, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Eisen and Dr. Evans.
Thank you.
Thank you for your update information. Mrs. Howke, are there any speakers for our public hearing this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have five speakers for this agenda item. The first two are David Happy and Daniel Amend.
I just want to thank you. I was actually at the workshop, and it was so refreshing to me to see our new school board actively engaged on controversial issues to the benefit of the children and the taxpayers and the families of Pinellas. I want to specifically recognize Ms. Meyer, Ms. Heine, Ms. Edmund, Ms. Peters, for taking bold stands on behalf of the parents, listening to the things that we asked you to have input on, and implementing some of the suggestions that came from the community. So thank you. Just one point of clarification on the controversial materials and on the library materials. It's my understanding that there hasn't been a directive yet for classrooms to replicate the policy that happens at the district level for our libraries. So I'd like you to reiterate and just echo to the teachers that if there are materials that aren't appropriate in the student libraries, that those same policies should be implemented in the classroom. But you guys are doing a great job. Thank you for being responsive to the things that we asked for, and we're real excited for our new board. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. And thank you for removing that one book that everybody's aware of. It seems, I don't understand where the discernment is or is lacking, because if you believe in nothing, you believe in anything. And apparently, there's people involved here that have no problem packing libraries and student classrooms with books that most people would know that's not, shouldn't be in a school. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. It seems like a lot of this is being driven by different kinds of critical theory. It's not just race, it's gender, it's queer, it's whatever the label is, and whatever deviancy is coming down the line. I would like everybody to embrace a little normalcy, a little, you know, we talk about moderation. Where is it? You know, I don't, where's this going? It just seems like, I'm not sure who's in charge of the libraries, but they don't seem like they're doing that great of a job. Maybe revisit them, get, you know, educate them on what is normal for a kid. And if you have a problem with challenging reading for an older person, I can give you many classics that would fit that bill. You know, I like a good history book and a polemic. You know, we're talking about African-American History Month, I suggest Frederick Douglass's autobiography. I guarantee you, none of anybody in senior years read that. I don't think most of them would have the vocabulary to get through it without a dictionary. But that's the kind of thing you should be pushing, not a lot of this garbage that's coming out. It doesn't make any sense, and God bless you for doing the right thing, and I hope you continue to do that. So thanks.
The next two speakers are Ginny Nelson and Renee Chia.
Hi, my name is Ginny Nelson, and I'm here tonight as a Pinellas County citizen. I'm here to voice my strong support for all the dedicated teachers who are teaching my grandson. He and his teachers deserve relief from the chaos that is caused by the attack of the state legislature on our public schools. I am here to demand the respect that must begin, must be given to the teaching profession. From my personal experience in the public school system, it is, it is, all the respect is deserved. In grade school, a librarian with the knowledge of how to nurture and encourage my love of reading, she helped me choose books to read based on knowledge of who I was. It was a relationship based on familiarity with me and acceptance of me. All students deserve that kind of attention. It is my experience that librarians don't indoctrinate. Politics has no place in school curriculum. Truth and full knowledge should rule. I support the board's efforts to uplift Pinellas teachers and their librarians, who are the ones who know how to educate our children. Thank you very much.
Before you start my time, can I ask a procedural question? It's my first time speaking at a public, this public hearing piece. Is it three minutes for each policy, or can I have three minutes for?
Madam Chair, if I may-
Can I have a little more time, is what I'm asking?
It is, is three minutes per public hearing. So this public hearing covers four policies, so you have three minutes to discuss all policies.
Per policy, can the chair grant additional time? I'm not going to need a full six minutes, but I don't want to have to read like, you know, a crazy person as fast as I can to get through everything, because I do have a lot of technical suggestions for two different policies.
The chair can grant, if she likes, some additional time, but certainly, it would be out of order to multiply three minutes.
Yeah. I mean, it would, I might just run over a tad, but like I said, I don't want to read super, super, super fast, so.
We need, I'm sorry, but we need to remain at the three-minute policy for each, for each item. Thank you.
All right. So for policy 2240, controversial issues, I would like you to please consider requiring any controversial issue raised to give equal and fair time and presentation of the opposing viewpoint. In the section that specifies source outside the schools to include contracted entities with the district, the eighth paragraph- the eighth paragraph contains language that implies a parent's right to review all content in full prior to the material being presented to their student. Please add more specific language regarding the obligation of the teacher to provide this material to parents in advance of using it in the classroom. Also, on paragraph eight, please revise the incorrect grammar usage. A parent's singular noun was properly followed by his/her and was revised to incorrect grammar using their, a plural. In the definition list of what constitutes controversial material, A through G, please consider adding racial slurs. In policy 2510, paragraph two, I understand this to mean supplemental materials should not make up the whole content of the curriculum for the course, but presently, there are courses being taught in public schools that are. So, I'm wondering if you're going to do any kind of review of that particular piece. Paragraph 19, please revise the grammar errors. It was correct to have a capital S for state as it is a proper noun referring to a government institution. Capitalizing district is more arguable. However, as a downstream unit of a government entity, I would argue to leave it capitalized, and that is throughout the document. Paragraph 20, if program coordinator for instructional materials is a title, it should also remain capitalized throughout. And there were also grammar pronoun changes with singular pronouns in this policy, and I would recommend changing those back throughout. Can we please model correct academic standards within PCSB in our policies? That would be great. Correct grammar usage, you know, second grade information. Procedures concerning challenged supplemental instructional materials and library media materials. Issues include, there's a two-layer grievance process. In my line of business, we don't allow two layers of a grievance process. I would recommend changing that and having it just one layer of a grievance process. And also, I went through this committee, and the way the policy is written now was not followed, in my experience. The required people there to do the review were not present during that review. So, that's problematic. I think the district should follow its own policies. And also, I recommend in, I made it amazing. In all policies, I would like to formally request all policies contain the appropriate legal statute or other school board policy citation within each document to add to public transparency and review. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lacey Hollings.
Thank, I'd like to thank the board for giving me time to speak tonight. I am a parent of an eighth-grade student at Palm Harbor High School, or Middle School, excuse me, and I am speaking on behalf of the banned book because it is one of the best books I have ever read. It is written by Toni Morrison. It is written by a Nobel Laureate in Literature. This is a Pulitzer Prize-winning author, in part because of this book. It is a well-written book. We have been taught in schools Huck Finn, which contains racial slurs, but it was taught with context because we have professional teachers teaching the material. We were taught to kill a mockingbird, and it has a horrific lynching scene, but we were taught it with context. This book requires context, which the teacher was going to provide. That is what teachers do. They provide the context, the learning, the education. It is one of the best books I ever read. It turned me on to Toni Morrison as an author. It made me a lifelong reader, and that's what we want for our students. We want them to be lifelong readers. We want them to be interested in learning. And banning books like this takes that opportunity away from them and sets them up for failure when they head to college because they won't have that background. They won't have read the important materials that they should have read. They will be lesser students. And, you know, who bans books? Nazis, communists, the Taliban, the apartheid. Those are not people you want to be in the company with. So, I would not suggest banning books. It's a slippery slope. This is good literature with value. Please do not ban books. You've already removed 10 titles. What's next? Are you going to keep removing? She suggests removing anything with racial slurs. So, Huck Finn, is that going? That's required reading by the state of Florida. So, you know, standards and cautions from the state. I will remind you, Ron DeSantis has had 15, 15 of his laws challenged in court. Nine have been struck down. He's won one. One out of 15. So, I wouldn't be too worried about Ron DeSantis' cautions and standards. You will win. You are perfectly fine keeping your books. You're perfectly fine teaching your, our kids. Don't worry about that. This book teaches about the least of these in society. It talks about how we treat each other. It teaches empathy. It talks about notions of beauty. There is so much to learn from this book. I cannot speak highly enough about this book. Please do not ban this or any other book. It is a slippery slope. It is not what we want to do for our children. It is not what it is best for.
Thank you. Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Board members, are there any discussion on 6.1? Ms. Edmund?
Since our workshop, I've had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Evans and other staff members, as well as pose important questions and review the transcript of the library media and instructional, instructional materials training. Thank you, Mrs. Eisen, Dr. Evans, and team for bringing this item forth in effort to follow state statute. After further research, I am unable to vote in support of this policy due to the vagueness of the terms under review of controversial materials, which has not been clarified by the state and can be subjective. This policy places pressure and a lot of additional responsibility on library media specialists in a. I look forward to receiving additional information as it becomes available. However, I would like to divide policy 2240 from the others for voting purposes. So, I move to divide policy 2240.
All right. So, we now have a motion to divide policy 2240 from item 6.1 separately, and a second by, a motion by Mrs. Edmund and a second by Mrs. Cook, all those in favor of dividing the policy for additional vote, say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. So, now we will take the vote on policy, or just have a discussion on policy 2240. Do we need a motion first?
Let's take a motion just on 2240.
Just on 2240, no other items that are listed in 6.1. Those will be separate. So, on item 2240, can I have a motion, or a movement for approval? Have a movement for approval from Mrs. Cook? And a second by Mrs. Heine. All right. Any discussion from the board on item 2240? Mrs. Heine, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Meyer was first. Did you still want to speak?
I do, but I actually want to speak on, I would like to speak. Okay, sorry. I would like to speak, but I would actually like to speak, ask a question on 2340, so.
We'll come back to that.
We will come back to that. Okay.
So, right now, we are just speaking on 2240. We'll come back to you. Mrs. Heine?
Regarding 2240, I would just ask Mrs. Edmund for a little more clarification on the vagueness of the terms. I would love to hear more about what you think.
Thank you. There we go. So, I went online and pulled up the transcript, and in reading that, I started looking for the terms that we have, like violence, profanity, and things of that nature. What one person might consider profanity might be different on another person's scale of profanity, which is what I deem as subjective. And when I say, I'm looking forward to additional information from the state, with something that happened recently, yes, today, there was some discussion regarding the literary value of that book. Not saying I agree or disagree with what happened, but just the subjectiveness of that decision that a library media specialist could make and then may or may not have it reversed. I think that should concern all of us because it is subjective. Someone might consider protest, what happens in a protest or what may not happen in a protest as violence, or not violence, or inciting violence. And again, that's subjective.
Ms. Heine?
So, we currently have a standing 2240. We've updated it over the course of several months, given legislation from last session. We didn't make a tremendous number of substantive changes to the actual policy, yet during that time, there has been the training and information that's come out. I've listened to it as well, that might shed some light on different things. I guess I just wonder, you know, if we weren't to approve the really more administrative changes that we've made to this policy, I'm not, I'm not sure what it, what it does. The existing policy would still hold. Is that right, Mr. Kupersky?
That's correct. If the motion to pass 2240 fails, with four more board members voting against it, then you just have the existing 2240 without the changes that are noted in red line on the agenda this evening.
I guess I would also say that I agree. It's very subjective, and that's exactly where professional expertise and training and standards and the education that our library media specialists get comes into play. And frankly, I, I trust them, and I trust that subjectivity. I do recognize that it's hard, that it's a really difficult position to be in, and I hope they have the support of our leadership here. They have my support. I don't know how we get to a point where in our policies here at the district level, at any level, that you can actually legislate every single element out of subjectivity of humankind. So, I guess, you know, I have great, great value for your thoughts. I just, I just wonder that if we, you know, pass the policy as we've, as we've amended it in order to be in, in compliance. I'm not sure that not doing so helps of solve what I agree with you is a great concern. Ms. Edmund?
Thank you, Mrs. Heines, for your comments and consideration. And I just think it's important that we've heard from the public today, and we've heard opposing views, and we know that we need to follow the state law. And I believe we're putting a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure on our media specialists, who are tasked with multiple jobs that may or may not be in their job description right now. And we really do need clarity on this if we're going to include all of those terms. And again, that's just something of recent that I noticed. Otherwise, I would have brought it up at the workshop.
Ms. Meyer?
Well, I don't think it's, I, I think when it comes to this policy, we have to look at it from coming into alignment with our state standards and, and the laws of our state. And this isn't, you know, books aren't being banned, per se. They are being deemed age inappropriate for minors. These books are still available in public libraries. Parents still have the option to take these, their, their children to the bookstore and buy these books. But we, we have to be in compliance with the law. And I think that the way we have this policy written, I think it, it does that.
Mr. Kupersky, I believe you stated that with or without the amendments, we would be in compliance with the law?
Yeah, the law will always supersede your policies. So, for example, if this policy with its changes fails this evening, this school board and Mr. Hendrick and the administration are bound, bound by the statute and the regulations. So, regardless of whether that conflicts with your policy, obviously, we like to just have our policy compliant and up to date, and that's why we bring these policies to you.
And I also think it's worth mentioning the concerns that were brought forth by someone related to the grammatical errors within the document.
Do we have any, any further discussion or comments from the board?
Ms. Kane?
Yes, Ms. Long?
Yes. I'm looking at all children, but RB, our IB, our Cambridge, these kids are not getting, they're, they're getting their regular high school diploma, but they are also getting an international high school diploma. They have to prove that they are better than the rest. They, the books that they're given are to teach them cultures that they maybe have not been exposed to. The IB International is thinking, there's been talk of this for a long time, but now it's getting really strong, that American children just aren't keeping up. Is that what we want for our children? These, these classes that they're taking are for college credit. So, they are high, upper-level classes. And you're, you're taking away an opportunity for some children, and I have a real problem with that. The parent should have the decision. I don't need Big Brother telling my daughter what to read, or other kids. And it did not affect her in a negative way because of the discussions they had as a class, but these children have to be challenged. Now, other kids that are 17 years old, they probably couldn't handle the curriculum. But our very, very bright, very studious students, they don't need it watered down for them. You're hurting, we're hurting American children by watering it down. And that's why the United States is falling so far behind other nations. And I agree with Ms. Edmunds. Some of these, these terminology are very vague. You can, you can turn them any way you want to make point.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mrs. Meyer?
Just one more point that I want to make. Yes, we know that these students are advanced, right? They are taking college-level courses. I myself am an AP teacher as well here. But at the end of the day, we have to remember that we are talking about minors. These are minors. And that matters. And I think that that needs to be the bottom line. That needs to be the basis for our policies, no matter how advanced these students are, no matter what classes they're taking. And there are certain laws surrounding minors, and, and we need to be, you know, we need to be in compliance with those laws.
Mrs. Cook?
This policy is not referring to an individual book. It is referring to how we are going to judge each and every book that, that comes into our media center. I am comfortable with the changes because a lot of the ambiguity has already been in there, and we've been functioning with it for years. It is about looking at the book, how it's going to be used in the classrooms, and then how, whether or not it is age-appropriate. So, I think this policy addresses it very, very, as, I say very, very clearly, as clearly as it can under the circumstances. When guidance has been given, then laws have been changed, and then guidance has been given, and it is flipping back and forth. What was acceptable two months ago is not acceptable now. And so, I think this gets us a little closer to what the law is requiring at this point. I don't see that it is any more slippery as far as the type of subjectivity any more than it already was. And so, I will, I will be supporting this just to make sure that we're a little closer in alignment with the state law.
Any further discussion? Ms. Heine?
I do, I, I would like to make one comment on this. This is something I've stated multiple times in, in the discussion of policies like this. I feel that until our community and until our state takes further steps to further define age appropriateness, we're going to continue to struggle with these sort of decisions and, and what direction to go. And I hope that in the future, those
And I hope that in the future, those steps will be taken throughout our community, and hopefully, there will be a move to further define those definitions so that it's more clear for our employees, for our media specialists, and for teachers in the classroom. And with that being said, I also support the changes that are being made as they bring us to compliance with the state and with state law. And Ms. Cook, did you have further comments?
To the point that you just made, that we hope that the state law is clarified, that's where we need to have the conversation. That's where we have the input so that the law that is coming forward is appropriate and is what we want it to be for our educators and our students as well.
Ms. Edmund?
I just want to restate for the record that that's what I'm requesting.
I'm seeing no further discussion by board members. Correct? Mrs. Long? I'm not hearing anything. With that being said, I'm gonna...we have a motion to approve Policy Number 2240 with a second. All in favor of that motion to approve just Policy 2240, say aye. And any opposed?
Me? No.
One name by Ms. Edmunds, and I'm gonna say six yes. Did we hear...did Mrs. Long?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, okay. So you are voting yes?
I'm voting with Ms. Edmunds.
Ms. Edmunds, so two, so we'll let the vote...
I agree with what she was...
So we will let the vote reflect five to...five to two, and the motion, the policy Number 2240 will pass as written and recommended by the superintendent. Ms. Edmund?
My question is, we...just to confirm, we approve the policy with the grammatical errors?
No, you have to give notes. They can fix them.
Oh.
Okay.
They can continue, yes. They can continue to correct grammatical errors.
So, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, just to get us reoriented here on this item, 6.1 was originally moved by Ms. Heine and seconded by Mrs. Cook. If those two members would like to confirm that they would like to keep that motion and second for the remaining three policies, we can just move on from there.
That's fine.
Confirm. Great.
Okay, so then we would have a motion on the table and a second to approve 6.1, Policies 2340, 2510, and 2540. Correct? All right. The motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of approving those items listed in 6.1?
Madam Chair, you should ask for any debate or discussion.
Is there any discussion on those agenda items? Excuse me. Yes. Mrs. Meyer?
So I have a question real quick on...it is on 2340. Could we just clarify for myself and for the public that the policy says that room assignments for overnight field trips are separated by biological sex at birth unless parents of minor students assigned to the room otherwise consent in writing. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, that's letter X in the policy, and that's the new part that complies with state law. And as we've, as Mr. Koperski has said, our practice has already changed. We're now bringing our policy up to speed with state law.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Heine?
Yes, I think taking these policies as a whole, especially the controversial issues and instructional materials policy first, because we've spent several months talking about them, I'd like to thank our team in strategic plans and policy, also teaching and learning, instructional materials, and our library media team for navigating us through these, as well as my colleagues. I think over the course of these several months, we've really thoughtfully discussed and updated these two policies that address all the materials that are used in our learning, and these policies have been in place for about 25 years. I'd also like to just share a few thoughts with fellow community members and parents, excuse me. You know, my two young children are eight and 11 years old, and since they were born, I've been worried about the amount of information that is out there in the world, the amount of content from all various devices and places and people that didn't exist when a lot of us in this room were growing up. I think a lot of parents feel the same. It's totally unfettered, and I feel like it's a part-time job sometimes managing, you know, screen time and parent permissions and passwords and all of these kinds of things. And for a long time, I've talked with my kids about language and image and about choice and about content, and that there's so much out there. And the amount, the diversity means there's a bunch of creativity and amazing things, and it also means there's some not-so-great things. But we all get to choose. We get to choose what we put out in the world. We get to choose the words we use. We get to use the tone we use. We get to choose that energy and image and text that we are putting into the world, and then we also get to choose the things that we consume. Now, sometimes things are going to come across our desk that we don't mean to see, and in that moment, we also make a choice right then and there. But you know what? In this world of my young children and content that is just everywhere, do you know what six hours a day I'm not worried about? I'm not worried about the six hours of day that they're at school. Do you know why? Because of faith and fidelity. I have faith in our teachers, in our staff. I have faith in people who choose this profession, who love children, who love learning, and have optimism for our future. Also to mention, they gain education certification and professional certifications that they have to maintain, and I respect that. And also the fidelity side, excuse me, fidelity to standards, to training, to policies, to procedures. I have seen our fidelity here at the district with meeting law, policies, and standards. Our staff here at Pennsyl County Schools is 14,000 strong, 14,000 people. Do you think we get something wrong every now and then? Yeah. But you know what? On a day-to-day basis, we get a lot of things right. Did you see that Lego video earlier? Did you see the face of Ms. Holland and her family when she got the Staff Support of the Year? I mean, that was amazing, right? Every single day, there is amazing work happening in our schools, and I think we all need to keep that in mind. So I just want to say, every day during our school years, six hours a day, we have amazing people, staff and teachers. I say thank you. I say I trust you. I have faith in you, and I appreciate that expertise, and I also appreciate the fidelity to standards, policies, and procedures.
Thank you very much for that. Not seeing any more lights go on, so I'm going to move ahead with the...we have a motion and a second on the floor to move for approval, Item 6.1, Policies 2340, 2540, and 2510. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing...Hearing...Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing none opposed, Item 6.1 passes unanimously with the additional, the additions. That we are going to move to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Subdued.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mrs. Cook and a second by Ms. Edmunds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda carries unanimously. And we are going to go to our non-consent items. We have a motion to approve Item 8.1, the request of approval of the naming of the YMCA Partnership School.
Madam Chair, if I may, I don't think you need a motion yet. On this one, we're going to introduce it, and then after the vote, we'll take a motion.
All right, absolutely.
May I? All right. Madam Chair, members of the board and the public, it's not every day that this board has an opportunity to name a school in a district that has been built out, and there's no new growth. It's rare that we have this opportunity, but we're excited through a partnership with the YMCA, and going back several years, they gave us approval for a magnet school in partnership with a community partner to create a new middle school in our district. And so I'd like to ask Mr. Herbeck, our Associate Superintendent for Operations, to take us through the process and a little bit of the history on this new school. Mr. Herbeck?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick and Madam Chair, board members. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Vigu, Mike Vigu, who's going to be the Area Superintendent of this school that is soon to be named and who's helped develop the schedule and lead us through this process to get us here today. So thank you, Mr. Vigu. If you've gone by the 62nd Avenue, you've seen progress going on at the YMCA school right now. We actually went through this morning, and the steel is up, ready for a roof. So we are moving forward at a very good pace. The YMCA is scheduled to open at the end of this year, whether it's December of 2023 or January of 2024. They're looking at a timeline real close to that. The school is set to open in August of 2024. With the construction market the way it is and with getting supplies and everything else the way it is right now, what we need to do, and the reason we bring this forth today, is that the architect and the construction manager need to design common signage such as the marquee, such as the monument signs, and such as wayfinding around both facilities. And that signage needs to be in place for the opening of the YMCA, and that's...those materials need to be ordered now to make sure that we get those on time. So that's why we bring this to you today. Just to give you a little bit more of a background, at the groundbreaking last June, the YMCA did name their side of the building, and they're naming it the Spear YMCA after the Spear Foundation and Mr. Roy Spear, who was the founder of Home Shopping Network. His family still has a very influential presence here in the community, and so the YMCA portion will be named the Spear YMCA. The name of our building, or the name of our portion of the property, our middle school, we will commingle that, and we will make sure that people know that they're going to both locations, and we really want everybody to see both names together and understand that it is a joint partnership at that facility. So today, again, we, at the workshop, we presented you with a series of names. We had, I think, about 150 unique names were collected from the community. Our Communication Department reached out to the community through social media, through more traditional attempts, through traditional media, and let the community know that we were collecting names and collecting ideas for the YMCA, what we've always been calling the YMCA Partnership School. Nominations period was open for a period of two weeks in November. Again, about 150 unique names were collected, that we shared that with you at the workshop. Today, what you're going to do is go through maybe one, maybe more ballots, but you have a copy of the ballot with you at the desk. What we're asking you to do is, again, going back to the workshop, going back to the names that you saw that you've been going over for the past week, you'll write down the name, your preferred name for the YMCA Partnership School, the middle school. You will sign that document, and Board Policy requires that there be a majority that agree on the name. So if we get four board members agreeing to a name in the first ballot, then that will be the name of the school. If we do not get four board members agreeing to a name, then the process will go to the next step. We will take the top two names at that point and have a second ballot. I'll defer to Mr. Koperski if we have seven unique names, and we'll help him work that through, but that is the task at hand at this point. So I'll return to Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mr. Herbeck, and we do want to thank our partners with the Y, who have been great partners, and our construction partners in this project. We've received a lot of community interest in the school, and we look forward to opening it. But Madam Chair, I'll pass it back to you to direct board members to take a vote, and I believe Mr. Koperski and Mrs. Hauck will collect and leave that vote back to you.
All right. Koperski?
Yes, Mr. Herbeck, very eloquently and in his usual loquacious manner, explained the entire process, and so at this point, I would ask that you complete the ballot. And I do know that Mrs. Long is virtual, but she is going to email myself, as well as Mrs. Hauck, her first ballot selection, and then I will give you about 10 or 15 seconds to do that and come pick it up. I'll return them back here. I do have a CPA sitting next to me, so he can help the lawyer count, and then we will...I'll report back to you.
Discussion?
And Madam Chair, if there's any discussion before members vote, you can certainly do that if you call, and if anyone has put on their lights, they can have discussion before voting.
Are these pieces of paper going to be public record? Because I'm going to spell it and have to go back to...
Yes, yes, the pieces of paper are going to be public record, as well as Mrs. Long's email to us. So, Madam Chair, if there's any discussion prior to voting on the first ballot, if you see any lights.
Is there any discussion? I'm seeing none.
So, Mrs. Long, if you're still on the line, if you could please email to...oh, she did. Okay, thank you. You did.
Mr. Koperski?
Madam Chair.
Do we have a majority?
We do have a majority, so you will not need to vote again. To vote again. So there are four votes for Mangrove Bay Middle School. So at this point, Madam Chair, there's no more voting required, and I would turn it back to you to entertain a motion and a second to name the new school Mangrove Bay Middle School.
May I have a motion to approve Item 8.1, the request of approval of naming of the YMCA Partnership School to Mangrove Bay Middle School? I have a move and approval by Mrs. Heine and a second by Ms. Edmunds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. The new school will be named Mangrove Bay Middle School. Then we are going to go to our New Order of Business. Items introduced...first, are there any items to be introduced by the superintendent, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. First, I want to invite the public and our board to our upcoming Evening of Excellence. It's just two weeks away where we celebrate our Pennels County Schools Teachers of the Year and our top 10 outstanding Teacher of the Year nominees. We'll be naming our Pennels County Schools Teacher of the Year, and I want to thank our Pennels Education Foundation, who will host the ceremony, which will take place on February 8th at the Mahaffey place on February 8th at the Mahaffey Theater. You'll find information on the ceremony and links to register on our website. We wrapped up our open enrollment period for district application programs and for our initial kindergarten registration, but there's still many opportunities for families to apply. If parents were not able to apply for a pre-K or magnet programs during their initial application window, they may do so during the late application periods. Starting on February 13th, families can once again apply for pre-K programs. And starting March 21st, they may apply for our magnet and fundamental programs. Kindergarten registration is underway for next school year. Please call our student assignment office if there's any questions. Speaking of excellent teachers and Teachers of the Year, it was a true pleasure this last week to visit Nina Harris Exceptional Student Education Center and recognize Dr. Kristy Jo Redferring, who teaches at Nina Harris as the National Special Education Teacher of the Year from the Council for Exceptional Children. She was named her schools and later the state's Teacher of the Year and won the national competition. It was a surprise visit from the national office, and all of her students and her family was there to celebrate. And boy, was it special. She has done a tremendous job at Nina Harris, and we celebrate her and congratulate her on this tremendous recognition. She will receive the national award in March at an annual conference in Louisville, Kentucky. Likewise, recognition's Osceola High School. Coach Ian Matthews won a national award as a varsity soccer coach, was named the national winner of the Positive Coaching Alliance Double Goal Coach Award. He was nominated by one of his students, his captain on his team, and was recently honored during halftime at a USF Bulls soccer game. Congratulations, Coach Matthews. And I want to thank the Tampa Bay Rays for their partnership on the Positive Coaching Alliance. Sandy Lane Elementary School recently highlighted their arts integration program. It's one of our magnet programs of arts integration. And the National Institute for Arts Integration and STEAM highlighted a third grade haiku project. That the school was recognized that combined language arts, music, and creative movement, as the Sandy Lane Elementary Conservatory for the Arts performed this with all of their third grade students. Congratulations to third grade teacher Kimberly Klein and music teacher Brenda Urban for leading this innovative arts integration project. Last week, we also honored our PCS Mentors of the Year, looking at all of our mentor programs from Take Stock in Children to 5,000 Role Models, Lunch Pals, and many in between. And it was a pleasure to honor those with our Pinellas Education Foundation. And this is Celebrate Literacy Week across the state of Florida and here in Pinellas County. And one of the events we do to celebrate literacy is a Battle of the Books. And several years ago, we started a Boys Read Battle of the Books in partnership, again, with our Education Foundation to raise awareness for how our boys lag behind their female counterparts in proficiency on our state exams. And as a district, we've closed that gap over the last couple of years. Our boys are still a little bit behind, but the competition of reading books that they're interested in has really piqued their interest. For several years, it was a pilot program, and this year, we opened it up to any school in the district, and the response was overwhelming. Today, we held our semifinals, and Friday will be the finals, right here in Conference Hall. And you can find a link to it on our YouTube channel. And I want to announce our finalists, who will be here on Friday morning, our boys competing for the championship. And they are from Brooker Creek Elementary, Jamerson Elementary, Gulfport Montessori, Lakewood, Lynch, Eisenhower, Ponce de León, Seminole, Dunedin, and Safety Harbor Elementarys. We will have a new champion this year, Mildred Helms, who has won two out of the last three years, did not make the finals today. And so, the 10 schools are very much looking forward to the competition this Friday. And speaking of great events, board members and members of the public, one of the things I emphasized when I became superintendent was the desire to look for more leadership opportunities and learning for our students. And today, we held our first Student Leadership Summit, and it was held at USF St. Petersburg. I want to thank Chancellor Hardigre for opening up her doors to this opportunity for our students. We have three more over the next couple of months for the rest of our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools. But it's given our students an opportunity to participate in the listen and learn sessions that we held in the community at nine sessions. And today, they participated in a session, but the challenge for them, unlike our community, was we tasked them to go back and lead. So, our students participated, and now they are going back to their schools and designing an opportunity for the students at their schools to improve, whatever it might be. And as you can imagine, our elementary students today, from the playground to the car line to school lunch and everything in between, had lots of suggestions. I want to thank again USF St. Petersburg, who helped to facilitate a scavenger hunt today around the college campus for our students, and many business partners who supported us in this effort, including Sam's Club and many, many more. And finally, I want to honor our superintendent standout, that has done, as I've done at each of our meetings and today, in honor of Student Services Week that's coming up, I'd like to honor Cheryl Pei, a school psychologist at Maximo Elementary School, who has worked for Pinellas County Schools for 15 years. And in one of our praise notifications, her colleague said that she has gone the extra mile to support and care for students and staff, not only at her assigned school, but for many years interns from colleges and across the district. She seeks, many seek her expertise and counsel and guidance. She's impeccable in her compassionate presence and for the integrity she brings to the community she works with. Thank you, Mrs. Pei, for the work you do each and every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So much. Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Next, do we have any items introduced by the school board attorney, Mr. Kopersky?
I have no report. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have any items introduced by the board members? Ms. Edmund, firstly.
I would like to encourage those who might be interested in obtaining employment with Pinellas County Schools to visit our website, PCSB.org. There are numerous jobs available. If you are interested in supporting students in schools, please consider mentoring, volunteering, or contacting a school located near you regarding any donations or other ways that you may assist them. And finally, I would like to request a workshop to review Policy 7250, naming and commemorating, in commemoration of district facilities, to ensure it's updated to meet current practice, as well as to discuss additional amendments.
Thank you.
So, do I call?
No, I support. Yes, we have a consensus that we would add that to a future workshop at some point, Mrs. Woodford. Thank you. Are there any other further board discussions? Seeing no... Mrs. Hind?
I think just because of the remarks I made earlier, I just want to piggyback one more remark, and also on the idea of coming here to work in Pinellas County Schools. It's an amazing place to be. And I just want to say that one does not have to choose between being pro-parent or pro-teacher. Anybody who is presenting that as a dichotomy, it is a false dichotomy, dichotomy, excuse me, and it's meant to divide us. We are all together here in this community, and we are committed to providing amazing education. You don't have to choose. I am a parent. I am a parent. I am pro-parent, and I am pro-teacher. So, I just would suggest everyone in this room and out there who's fired up about these things, talk to one another and create a relationship, and know that we're all here for the same reason. We're all passionate for the same reason. And that is for a bright, positive future and well-educated. Reject the idea that you're one or the other. You can be both. We can all be both. And thank you, Mr. Hendrick, for your remarks and always keeping us focused on the work and the amazing work that's happened at our schools. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further lights on. So, I'm going to move forward. Ms. Woodford, will you please review the board requests?
Yes, I noted only one request from Ms. Edmund's on naming facilities. I'm not sure if I got the policy correct, but I'll get with you to make sure.
We were 7250.
7250.
Policy 7250.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. And with that, we'd like to thank you all for bearing with us through this process of voting and through our meeting. And before we perform our board meeting evaluation, we will adjourn the meeting and move to public participation. With that, I adjourn this meeting. We will now move to public comment on general business of the district. Please note that the views and comments of our public speakers are their own and not endorsed nor sponsored by the school board or district. We cannot ensure the accuracy of statements made, but will review concerns that are raised and take appropriate action, which may include clarifications or the referral of speakers to the proper staff member for assistance. Thank you, Mrs. Hauck. Are there any public speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick, we currently have 24 speakers signed up. The first two are Brant Robinson and Lee Bryant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick and staff, as well as our community members. My name is Brant Robinson. I proudly teach at Dunedin High School. I teach social studies and history, and I'm currently in my 25th of my 26-year career at Dunedin High School. I say this always, I am so grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I so appreciate your commitment, all of you, to our schools here in Pinellas County, and of course, to public education. Couple of weeks ago, I started a new sociology class. It's a one semester elective. And just like every teacher I've ever known, we spend the first several weeks just doing everything we can to create a positive, safe, welcoming learning environment. And some of the things I've told my sociology class is that I will never, ever disrespect or embarrass someone in my classroom. I will never tell my students that they're wrong. If I ever call on them, and I do often, they always have the option of sharing or passing. I always tell them, you're going to learn our stuff, and I apologize for calling it stuff. And I tell them on the first day proudly, it doesn't matter to me whether you're a Democrat or Republican or Independent. It's not my job to tell you what to think. It's my job to help you be a better thinker. And as I'm doing these things, what all teachers do, I never use the words equity, inclusion, or diversity. None of us have to, because we model that commitment every day. It's part of the foundation of our democracy. These are fundamental principles and values. And I'm confident that even those here tonight, who might make accusations that we indoctrinate our students, or that we groom them, or that we use the false issue of critical race theory, I'm confident that all of them as well had wonderful teachers who modeled diversity, equity, and inclusion as well. We've all been through a lot the last few years. I've never been more proud to be a public school teacher, and I've never been more proud of how I do that each and every day. We all agree that the pandemic has revealed a great deal about our country. Sadly, one of the things that it also revealed is that there are many in our public across the country who really just don't understand what we do in that six, or Ms. Hind, that seven-hour day. They don't understand what goes into crafting a lesson that's bell-to-bell, total engagement. I don't have a desk in my room and never sit down. You've heard a lot about a mantra called parental rights, and I respect that, as you said, Ms. Hind. But ironically, our public schools have always been open. They've always been open, and they always will be. I want to close tonight just by reminding anyone who's here, you know, I know I speak for most teachers when I say that. My classroom is always open. It's always open to you. You're welcome to come anytime. You can sit in on a lesson. You can sit in on an entire day if you'd like. But I think it goes a long way in that collegiality. And if we can do that here in this county, if we can break down barriers, then we can set a precedent for not only districts across the state, but people across the country. So, thank you all so much for the opportunity.
First of all, nobody voted for Schoolie McSchool? I thought it would work. Good evening, Chair Kane, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick and staff. My name is Lee Bryant, and my pronouns are still he/him, and I will keep using them until we have achieved some acceptance in our society. And that is really what this is all about. As public school employees and educators, we not only have the duty, we have the honor and the privilege of accepting our students as they come to us. No matter where in the world they come from, if they've never been into a school before, if they can't read, write, or figure out what X equals. As a social studies teacher, not a math teacher, I can tell you that X equals buried treasure. We accept our students, whatever religion or lack thereof, whatever their level of wealth or poverty, we accept them. Whatever physical or neurophysical challenges they face, we will face it with them. And, and we accept our lesbian, gay, bi, trans, and questioning students as they come to us. We accept our students for who they are, not what we or anyone else wants them to be. Indoctrination is not happening in our classrooms, and it is not happening in our libraries and media centers. Our media specialists are well-trained at selecting age-appropriate literature for their libraries. Parents absolutely get to decide what their kids read or don't read at school, but parent jurisdiction does not extend to other people's children. Banning books is simply bad. It deprives us of exposure to ideas, concepts, and worldviews that are not our own. Removing books stifles curiosity, and it perpetuates stereotypes. And when you do that, you weaken our ability to think critically, to know when you're being fooled. Banning and removing books is almost always targeting minority representation. It goes after black literature and thought, gay, lesbian, trans literature and thought. It goes after rampant poverty, sexual assault, and oppression. Banning and removing books like these also deprives some people from finding out that they are not the only ones facing their challenges, knowing that they are not the only ones that feel the way they feel, or has been through, or suffered what they have been through. Knowing that people have been through this may save their life. Yes, a book can do that. To wrap up, let's simply say that educators do not teach our students to hate, and we do not indoctrinate. We accept them and encourage them to become happy, whole, and complete human beings.
The next two speakers are Mary Ann Phillips and Angela D.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here and speak. I also am from the schools. But I'm a parent. I'm a grandparent. And I'm a school social worker. So, I was glad to see my supervisor, Mrs. Cillian, here to present a word to a colleague of mine. I want to say, like the two speakers before me, that I'm in a school, I meet a child where they're at. I accept them for who they are without judgment. My personal beliefs make no difference. It's all about where they are, what they need. In Pinellas County, we have a very diverse population of students, and the books that they read are powerful. They speak to us. They speak to all of us when we find a book that is about us. I want all students to be able to find that book that speaks to them. Student self-esteem and mental health improves if they can read stories, see movies, use other media that reflects their lives, that respects who they are. All of us as humans have the desire and the need to belong somewhere. Many of my students don't feel that belonging. Children that feel different in some way need to find someone like them. Sometimes, it's in a book. And this, like others said, is life-changing. It can save their life. It's a simple thing. It builds confidence. It allows them to be social, to find their people. I hope we can find a way to do the book reviews in a way that serves children. I understand that you have to follow state laws, but I am also confident in our media specialists. They're great people. And they need to look at what is, without feeling like they're going to be punished or hurt in some way. So, I hope we can all support them, support each other, and I hope that we can work with parents. My parents are great. Parents are important. Parents are part of who, part of our children. But some of our kids don't have parents, and some of our kids don't have someone to help them. So, we have to be that someone. And like I said, I'm not there to groom them or influence them. I'm finding out who they are. And so, I just want everybody public, everybody included, to be part of that. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for bringing back the live stream. First thing I want to talk about today is Governor DeSantis and why he's not allowing the AP African-American History class to be taught, because social media is full of lies. If you read the basis of the class, it's teaching whites are oppressors and blacks are oppressed, which is illegal in Florida. Also, African-American history is history and already is being taught, and has always been taught, because it's required by state law. I'm not an expert in this, but if you have questions or unclear about what's taught in regards to history, I suggest you contact Stephanie Meyer. She has her master's degree in history, has taught American and world history for five-plus years in sixth grade through 12, and has taught history at the college level for two. Second, I'd like to talk once again how dangerous restorative justice or restorative practices is, and it needs to be removed. Recently, a six-year-old student shot his teacher at an elementary school. The teacher had previously threatened the... The teacher had previously threatened the student, I'm sorry, the student had previously threatened to burn and kill another teacher, barricaded doors, and threw furniture, but the elementary school dismissed the complaints. This is restorative justice. This is happening in Pinellas County schools. Last year, a student in one teacher's class was violent and destructive, but because of this crap, he was right back in the classroom, and the issues were never discussed or addressed. Then for two straight school years, children have been bullied, each school year, each time by a different student. But due to the skin color, the student was right back in the classroom. No one cares about the skin color, they care about the safety. And the problem is, again, if they have bullying tendencies, special issues that cause violence, they need to be self-contained, and this needs to be addressed. I'm going to email you a tale of two schools that shows the difference between zero tolerance school versus restorative practices. I refer to restorative practices as RP, and zero tolerance as zero. Carlos has an argument with his parents in the morning and is running late for school. He arrives at school. RP, walks into the building, right to his class. Zero, enters through a metal detector, and police are present on campus. He's late for class. RP, his teacher waits until after the class to talk to him, sets up an appointment with the counselor. Zero, his teachers scold him in front of the class, and if Carlos talks back, he gets a detention. Carlos goes to lunch and gets an altercation. RP, student, peer, mediator, student, staff intervene and have a discuss, and have a discussion. Zero, a policy officer detains and arrests both students. Later that afternoon, restorative practices, Carlos and the other student agree to help clean the cafeteria, and Carlos meets with his counselor and parents after school to help resolve the conflict at home. Zero, both students are held in detention facility all afternoon and while missing school, and will have an arrest record and maybe face suspension. Please remove restorative practices from Pinellas County schools, because in 2024, if it's not, we're going to have a greater majority board.
Thank you. The next two speakers are David Happy and Jacob Cox.
Thank you. I got three quick topics for you tonight. The first one is, I think you might have made a mistake with the name of the school. You named it Mangrove. With everything we got going on in Pinellas, you named it Mangrove? I'm going to suggest a revision to They Grove, and I think if you name it They Grove, it might be more conforming to the school policies. The book that everybody's talking about, the book that I heard Mrs. Long wax philosophically about keeping in Pinellas County schools, is a book that highlights the rape of an 11-year-old by her father, written from the perspective of a pedophile. So in case anybody listening at home is confused about the books we're talking about, what some of the people, including Ms. Long, are advocating for is that our IB students need to be able to read books about fathers raping their children in the most graphic terms I could have, and I wouldn't be allowed by Mr. Kopersky to read to this meeting. So when you hear about banning books, and we need to let these kids just read, there isn't a student, a minor, under Florida Law 842001, that should ever be handed a book by a media specialist, or a teacher, or Mr. Hendrick that did not much to remove this book. There isn't a student that needs a book about being raped by their father, written from the viewpoint of the pedophile. And my last point is, I got some information through one of our media companies, that it's credible information that the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association is below 50% membership. Under Florida Law HB 7055, you have a requirement as a board, if this information is true, and I believe it to be true, you can check it, so it's not false information if you do look at it and see. If they're below 50%, the school board is required to require the union recertification. What does that mean? That means that the union is no longer recognized for collective bargaining purposes, until the union is forced to take a vote of all of the teachers. I'm wearing red here because I am red for Ed, I support schools. The raises you've given to our teachers in the last couple of years is deplorable. The fact that the union settled for, what, a 3%, 4% raise two years ago, less than a 5% raise this year, while the administration got far larger of a raise than that, we need to pay our teachers more. But you also need to follow the law. If at your next meeting, you recognize this school board without looking into their membership totals, you'll be in violation of Florida HB 7055 for decertification. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Paul Zanger and Barbara Mellon.
Hello. My name is Jacob Cox. I'm an 11th grader at Hollins High School. A lot of you here are concerned about these banned, potentially banned books, but I think what we're looking, we're looking at this problem from the wrong perspective. Whether these books are banned or not is irrelevant, because they're not going to be taught in schools. Not because the teachers don't like them, or the faculty don't like them, but because we can't afford to buy them. At my school, we have the Cambridge Program, an international college credit program. My ACE Literature class, we have a required textbook that the school will not buy for us. If the school won't buy a required textbook for a college-level class from an international program, what makes us all think they're going to buy these books that are not required, that the teachers just want to read for their class? These books, they're not going to be read, not because we want to ban them or not, but because we can't afford them. My English teacher, because she does not have these textbooks, which we could use year after year, she prints every poem, every short story that we read and analyze in class for each student. It's a waste of her time, it's a waste of our money on ink and paper, this time that she could be using to plan her classes, to work on material, and book, find books for us to read. She's now using, in front of the copier, spending hours on copiers that also constantly break because we can't afford to replace them. What we're looking at here is not an issue in deciding on our curriculum or picking books to read, it's an issue of funding, because no matter what books we want to read, we're not going to be able to read them if we can't purchase them. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Mellon.
My name is Barbara Mellon. I'm the parent and the mother of a second grader in Pinellas County schools. Over the past couple of years, I'm seeing my parental rights stripped away to an alarming degree. While I might not agree with the new laws, they were put in place to protect parental rights, and instead, they're being weaponized to take them away. In Pinellas County, parents have always had the right to review curriculum and place restrictions on their own child. However, another parent should not be able to step on my parental rights and restrict my child from reading books or learning from a curriculum that has been well-researched and proven effective. Our teachers are amazing. They're well-educated in their subjects, in the respective ages that they teach. They know what is age-appropriate, and I trust them to help my child choose an appropriate book. My parental rights are being violated when teachers are restricted from providing specific materials and specific books in their classrooms. I want my child to have a well-rounded education, and to access as many viewpoints as possible. I trust our teachers and staff to guide my child, to teach my child to think critically from a young age. I trust them to ensure any material is age-appropriate, and allows my child to think for themselves. Pinellas County Schools District vision is 100% student success. Our mission is to educate and prepare each student for college, career, and life. Restriction of books and violation of parents' rights by other parents goes in opposition to that vision and mission. I'm asking the school board, please stop the removal of materials from schools. Stop putting unnecessary burdens on our already overworked teachers and staff. I'm asking the board to allow those parents who want to restrict their own children, restrict them. That's fine, but do not allow them to violate my parental rights, and restrict from my child and from other children whose parents also trust our teachers, staff, their education, skills, and the ability to do their job. As Ms. Heine said earlier, I have faith in our teachers, and I have faith in our staff. I trust them to choose appropriate materials and to provide the context necessary. I'm asking all of you on the board to please do the same.
Hello, how are you? My name is Paul Zanger. I'm at an elementary school here in the county. I work within the EBD unit. I will say one thing about Pinellas County schools is they do hire very good principals, and they've all left, so nobody knows I'm sucking up to them. The, I, there's a few things that I want to mention on the public record. One is buses. We train bus drivers, get their CDL, and then they can leave with no minimum requirement of staying. Why are we wasting that money training people who are going to immediately leave and get a job somewhere else, making a ton more money? We should at least require a certain minimum time. The, the world is different, and we schools need to provide mental health treatment in the schools. I cornered Dr. Greco years ago after the law was passed about the armed safety officers, and I said, "Let's just do civil disobedience and hire psychologists for all the school districts, and we'll just code them as safety officers." Because if we do have psychologists on staff, that would be a lot more safe than whatever else we're doing. Because every issue that we've had with any school violence, every single one, everyone can trace back to mental health. It's got nothing to do with the safety of the school, but it's mental health. The third thing I want to do is say that we got, we had three EBD units at my school. After the 10-day count, one was cut. But the schools that are going to send kids to EBD don't, don't know about it within the 10 days. So by the time all these schools decided they needed to send kids to EBD, we already were down a unit. That's bananas, that's stupid. It should have waited until we knew how many we needed in EBD. The last thing I believe I want to mention is that all board members should substitute in the schools anonymously, and be there, not as a exalted member, "Oh, an honored guest, here we have." No one needs to know who you are, just substitute for several days, so you know what really goes on in the schools.
The next two speakers are Renee Gia and Daniel Ammann.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank you all for turning the livestream back on for transparency to the public, and I would like to thank Ms. Ammann for caring about having a standard within the district for at least modeling appropriate grammar. I appreciate that. As you all are aware, I am a compliance ethics professional. I am required to have professional certifications that I maintain for, for my trade that I do as my day job. Stating that, I wanted to bring up a couple of issues with you. One is, I was listening to your discussion just now on the policies, and I want to caution you on scope creep when you talk about these policies. There was a lot of issues in that discussion that don't have anything to do with what was actually in the policies themselves. So I would just, you know, caution you on that, especially since you're voting on these. You don't want other discussions to be rolling into that discussion. And I agree with you, Ms. Heine, that most issues in the school and most teachers in the district are great. What we want for you to acknowledge is the issues that exist, instead of being dismissive, ignoring it, or covering up different issues that actually exist in the district that need addressing. This brings me to a discussion about the ethics review sham that PCSB has. I have raised many issues about ethics, and, as well as others that I know, and there is not an actual ethics review in this district right now. It gets shut down, your ethics professional will look to solve, instead of doing findings of ethical misconduct according to the Code of Conduct, and, and/or take steps to be dismissive and shut down the public when those issues come up. And that's horrific in my job. People would be getting fined, people would be getting fired if that was going on, and I have raised this issue multiple times with all of you on the board, and I will raise it again. Also, I just want to bring up the issue about, everyone's talking about these, these books and the content of the books. There is a massive difference between Huck Finn and a graphic description of rape by a father to a child. And the books that we want to discuss and the content that's in a lot of these curriculum that we continue to come up here and discuss are highly inappropriate for a public school setting. So I just want to be really clear about what it is we're talking about, and we're not talking about banning books, we're talking about taking out inappropriate content. Your second grader shouldn't be reading about rape. Thank you.
Mr. Ammann? The next two speakers are Nicole St. Ledger and Paula Stephens.
Good evening. My name's Nicole St. Ledger. I am a mom of four children in Pinellas County schools. I currently have a seventh grader, an eighth grader, a senior, and a Lakewood Cat graduate that is thriving in college as we speak. I also have many years as a teacher, lots of joys and challenges teaching three-year-olds through 12th graders, foreign language. I had this whole thing that I was going to say, and it kind of shifted a bit today, because I came here to be a yay cheerleader of some amazing support people and teachers. And there's a segment of our community that, along with the book banning that has been being discussed, is also actively saying that teachers should not be supporting children with their mental health in classrooms. That's one of their agenda bullet points that they have at the moment. And I think that could be very damaging for our schools, our teachers, and our children. And I'm going to share a story that I was going to tell anyway. We, our family, our school family, lost a child to suicide at the end of the school year of this past year. This child was my eighth-grade daughter's first friend at this school. It happened on Friday night, and I know exactly what time the teachers were told and the staff were told on that Saturday after. Because in a 15-minute window, every teacher who had my cell phone number had reached out to check on my child and my family, and to see what they needed to do to help support us. Because that's what teachers do. They support and care. We experienced an amazing crisis team that was there at our school for the whole week, supporting the staff, the teachers, and the children. My daughter still talks about one of them being so warm, caring, and easy to talk to. They were amazing. And here we are, eight months later. There is no district crisis team in the school. We have one guidance counselor for the middle school, and one guidance counselor for the elementary school. They are both amazing people, doing their best for the children, 24 hours a day, they would be. And yet, what comes down to it, because these kids are still dealing with this. A joke, a picture, someone catches a frog, and it all comes back to them. And the people who are helping our kids through that are the teachers, because they understand, as Superintendent Hendrick said last meeting, education is interconnected. One thing affects another. If a child comes up...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Stephens.
Good evening, Manor Chair, board members, Mr. Hendrick, and others. I want to say that I am proud to be a teacher, an educator. I am in my 25th year, and I really would like to encourage all of you to publicly, and I know this is a public forum, but to give a shout-out to your teachers. I know, Mr. Hendrick, it's wonderful, the updates that we get, and the pride you take in showcasing our teachers. in showcasing our teachers. And it would be wonderful for teachers to hear it from the board members themselves. I know as a classroom teacher, there are days when it is just, it's a grind and you're going from bell to bell, moment to moment. You don't have time to breathe. And then it, to come here and hear some of the wonderful things that are being said, it uplifts you and rejuvenates you and reminds you why you got into this profession to begin with. The problem is, is a lot of people aren't wanting to come into our profession anymore. Currently, as of this evening, there are 112 instructional positions available in Pinellas County Schools. There are 171 support staff positions available in our schools, 45 of which are medical behavioral associates, which are our students with the most needs. They are their personal assistants to help them throughout the day. So we still have, we still have a lot of hiring that needs to happen and we are 95 days into our school year. With that being said, again, I would just like to encourage you to shout out to your teachers, to shout at Tallahassee and let them know that they need to start encouraging teachers and tell them, "Your teachers are not indoctrinating. Your teachers are following the rules. Your teachers are caring." Tell them the wonderful things that you're seeing there. And maybe, just maybe, teachers coming into this profession will stay for 25 years and not leave us before they hit their fifth year. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Nancy Velardi and Ginger Bringle.
Good evening. At the beginning of this school year, I told you that PCTA and PESPA had gathered the faculty reps together and asked them what they would like to see in our buildings and in their classrooms, what they wished for themselves as educators, what they wished for in their leadership, and how they envisioned the future of their beloved profession. We've taken their input and created a vision for the future as seen by your educators. I have a copy of the first draft of this document for you so that you can see plainly that the vision of your employees is very similar to the vision of the district. As your partners, PCTA and PESPA are more than willing to contribute in whatever way as we can to ensure that this vision becomes a reality. The false narrative about unions only being interested in the welfare of the educator and not the student has never been true. The union is educators. They're comprised of educators. And not one of us has lost the deep commitment we held to the students in our classrooms. We believe that teachers should be highly qualified, continually training for improvement, and of course, paid appropriately for their devotion, experience, and expertise. We believe that public education shall be, should be well-funded since we educate and care for 90% of Florida's children. We believe that all children deserve to see themselves in the curriculum offered in our classrooms and no child should ever feel lesser than the other. We believe that limiting curriculum weakens the education that our students receive, leaving them less prepared for the diverse world of higher education and employment. Our children are our future and should be made ready to excel in every aspect of the new society. We believe that our schools should be bright, colorful, welcoming places that reflect the surrounding community accurately. We believe each child should feel safe in knowing they belong, whether through a sports team, a choir, or an academic group. We believe that learning should be filled with joy, the joy of learning something new and either embracing or rejecting new ideas as the individual chooses. This is education at its finest and at its most successful. And only this kind of world-class education will create productive, thoughtful citizens for the future of Pinellas. Our fondest wish is to see our students move through the world successfully and happily, making their own decisions based on their acquired ability to reason learned in our public school classrooms. While others look to divide, PCTA and PESPA, the unions for your educators, seek only to unite for the benefit of our students. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Honored Board Members, and Superintendent Hendrick. Many years ago, I chose to join our teachers' union after researching the benefits and value of the membership. I received a membership form that clearly outlined the number of automatic deductions that would be taken from my pay and the amount of those deductions. At no time was I forced to join the union, nor have those dues automatically deducted. I had the option to pay separately if I so chose. It was always my choice. Those who claim union members have no idea how much dues are, are blatantly lying. You see, thanks to our amazing payroll department, there's this thing called a pay stub that comes with our paycheck and it lists every deduction that comes out of our pay: insurance, taxes, union dues. Transparency, it's there. So transparent, in fact, that there's one deduction that stands out above all the rest. And that would be the 3% deduction to our FRS fund that is being forcibly removed from our pay. Educators were not given a choice. And we are now losing an amount that is double the amount of our union dues. Forcibly removed from our pay. So much for paycheck protection. While I'm here, I wanted to comment on a few things I've heard tonight. First of all, I'm a library media specialist at a high school. I have students from age 14 to 19. Most of our seniors are 18 years of age. Most of them can, you know, vote, join the military. Many of them are parents, believe it or not. Two years ago, we had a young lady who was expecting a child. That was created out of a rape by a family member. Please do not tell me our students don't know what's going on in the real world. They know. And reading a book about these tragedies and these horrific events teaches them how to process those. There are learning lessons in those books. That's why they are literary works. That's why they are classics and have maintained that all this time. Many of us read all of these when we were in high school and we're still standing. We have AP dual enrollment and college classes. If we are not allowing them to read the subject matter that other districts are, we are way behind the rest of the country. You're doing your students a disservice and yeah, we care about our students here. Last but not least, library media specialists, please, please, please take some things off our plate. You want us to do all of this? I'm telling you, I'm about to cry over this. It's too much.
The next two speakers are Bronson Odechoff and Jonna Holloway.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to start and say that I'm really pleased that we returned to transparent public comment. I think that that is something that we really needed to do. I've talked about that before. And I think it's, it's really important that someone who doesn't have the ability to attend this meeting can hear what was discussed because there's a lot of comments that, that are made here. And I think there's value in people getting to hear them. So we have made some strides there, but I would like to make some suggestions on how we could continue to make this, this public comment more transparent. I'm a little concerned that the actual airing of public comment was something that could be added or removed at a work session and doesn't really require an opportunity for people to be able to comment about how they feel about that, citizens to be able to comment about how they feel about that. And I, I know it comes down to an actual policy or an actual practice. It's my understanding. And so I think something as critical as does the public, you know, have, you know, access to transparent comment, I think that should be something that should be placed in a policy. If that, if, if, if it has to be in a policy to make that where it comes before the board, it has to be voted on and, you know, a record kept of that. I think that needs to be go in, go into a policy revision. I also think that we need to return the public comments to the minutes. That was something that was before. I know there was some discussion about that. And that was the case until the, the public comment was removed from being aired at the work session. So those were actual things and, and, and we, we should have that in the, in the writing for people to reference. I also think that a public comment should be at the beginning of the meeting. And I think some of the comments from the work session were that, "Well, it's not really, it's not really business. It's, it's a public comment." But I would submit to you that our comments and our concern of the constituents of Pinellas County should be, and is, is business that should be during the meeting. And so putting that in, in the meeting and not after the adjournment would be very appropriate. Very quickly, one more thing, I think it came up tonight. If we have, where we're voting on a lot of policies together, those really should be separate because if someone takes the time to really review all those policies and they have comments, they should really be able to comment on all of them and not just group them into three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonna Holloway. I'd like to say that what these teachers are saying about caring about all their students is commendable and I trust in them also. I believe that banning the books is a wrong idea, as was mentioned. They provide information that the teacher can have the classroom discuss instead of them not knowing what to think of this book. And it, it also is our subjects that these students are aware of or may be experiencing. I do think it's somewhat ironic and absurd that we are recognizing National African American History Month in the school boards, but we're not allowed to teach critical race theory. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Brennan Pickett and Tracy McConnell.
Evening. The past few years in this country has been tumultuous at best and the state of Florida has been no exception. Culture wars and political games are actively playing a larger role in the lives of our children than ever and it's not the fault of the public school system. It's commonly accepted by the public that teachers and staff should never express their politics in the classroom. But why now are we to accept claims that indoctrination and grooming runs rampant in our schools? It's an obvious truth that we must accept all children from all backgrounds and all needs, but why now are we actively banning material that promotes equity? Why now has equity and acceptance become a taboo subject in a system that simply demands it? It's a fact of life that we're seeing a deliberate attack on public education to drive it into the ground. In fact, it's becoming more and more obvious that the current decision-makers in Tallahassee would rather see this all privatized. Teachers and staff are universally understood to be overworked and underpaid, but now we're being belittled and threatened with lawsuits in a state that holds some of the largest teacher vacancies in the country. It's a joke. Tallahassee might accept this as the new norm, but Pinellas County doesn't have to. After all, it was Ronald Reagan that once said, "As government expands, liberty contracts." I hope the board can recognize the expansion taking place in Tallahassee and the contraction of a teacher's liberty to teach and the student's liberty to learn. When we give power to those without merit or experience in our schools, we only exacerbate our failure to serve our community. I'm begging the board to continue bringing in all stakeholders equally as an active component in our district's decision-making: students, parents, and teachers. Without students, we have no one to teach. Without parents, we lack the necessary home support. Without teachers, you don't have schools, you have daycares. I like what I do. I am an English teacher at St. Petersburg High School and I want to stay a teacher in my hometown. I truly find the work I do rewarding, but I, but understand the reality of being a teacher in this political climate. I need everyone here tonight to understand that in the six short years that I've been a teacher in this state, I have been a mentor for almost a dozen new teachers who are no longer teachers. We cannot keep teachers because, well, the public is just pushing them away from the job. This political climate has nourished a revolving door culture that is unsustainable. It is fizzling out and the only losers are our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy McConnell and I teach third grade at Pinellas Central Elementary School. I am here today to advocate for my third grade students as well as all third grade students across the county. You guys are well aware of the mandatory retention policy for third grade as far as reading and them having to pass portfolio assessments in order for them to move forward. Our module E that we got this year has two books in it that we are reading. One of them is Charlotte's Web and one of them is Edward Tulane. Just so that you guys are aware, the grade level expectation for third grade at this time of the year is Level O. They are expected to be a Level P reader by the end of third grade. Charlotte's Web comes in at Level R. So that's already above where they should be, which makes teaching and having them, you could do it as a read aloud, right? But the curriculum is not written that way. It has you reading part of it aloud to them and then having the kids go off and partner read together. R is like, eh, it's not too, too bad, but Edward Tulane is Level U. Edward Tulane is really a fifth grade reading material. So whenever I got the module this time, I was like, "Well, you know what? I'm just going to teach the standards. I'm going to find a book that I can use that works for my students." Then, right before Christmas break, the test came out and it, the module, the writing assessment was delivered. And when I looked at it, I was just heartbroken because those students that are supposed to be reading Level O at this time of the year are being asked during a module assessment that counts for a portfolio score to go through and reread the last chapter of Edward Tulane and then write their own piece of literary text that kind of is based on Edward Tulane. The text is too hard for them. There's going to be kids, even if you have a classroom full of kids that are reading at grade level, they can't do what they're being asked to do independently or with partners. If you have kids that are reading at R and you send them out, which by the way, we're only supposed to be at O again, but you send them off to read with a partner, who are they reading with? Because nobody in the class is reading at a Level U. It's too hard. My plea is for you guys to do something to make sure that the curriculum that is in the modules for us matches what the grade level expectation is. It's too hard to teach when the material is so far above where the students are.
The next two speakers are Pam Macaloon and Lacey Hollings.
Good evening, everyone. And I'd like to thank everyone here who believes that we need to be in compliance with the state laws. There is appropriateness and there is inappropriateness. Stephanie, I agree with you, Ms. Meyer, new school board member. Where the, where books are concerned, we have to really keep the minors in mind. For example, I came across, I went to a seminar and it was noted that in kindergarten down, it was down in some county in, in South Florida, that the gender-bred man was being shown. Does anyone know about the gender-bred man? Shown to kindergarteners where what, what that, what that was doing was teaching them that there's complexities with gender to kindergarteners. So I don't think anybody here thinks that's particularly appropriate. And I also think that, well, I, well, I'd like to, you know, just go back to, to also, we're talking about books being banned, what have you. When you reach a certain age, you really can't ban books. I mean, I grew up during a time, you had Playboy, okay? And if, if some kid down the street had, had, you know, Playboy magazine, you know, you looked at it, what have you. But that doesn't mean that that particular magazine is going to be approved, you know, through the school. You can go out and buy it yourself. to be approved, you know, through the school. You can go out and buy it yourself. But let's focus on what's really important and that is the reading, writing, and arithmetic, the three Rs. A good education, we have lost the competitive, competitive advantage in mathematics, as an example. We're falling behind Korea, Japan, China. They are eating our lunch. We need to really focus more on, again, education. I believe that, that, uh, teachers should have more autonomy in the classroom. And I'm not a big, uh, supporter of teachers' unions at this point. I think there's been too much bureaucracy that has been created. And teachers just need to be able to teach. Yes, Ms. Heinz, I think that the teachers can be trusted, but I'm one of those trust but verify. You cannot substitute, uh, adult supervision. You just cannot. Adult supervision, parents, whether it be a guardian or grandparent, have to be aware of what the child is being taught. I remember going through, uh, my kids' backpacks, seeing what was being taught. One time I did come across some information. It was literature I did not like or I certainly had questioned and I did stunt, I, I marched into the principal's office and talked to her about it and it was explained. But we have to pay attention. Again, trust but verify, but let's focus on educating our children. And one more thing I'd like to add is that, does anybody know Nancy Zambito, she used to, uh, work in the public school system? She had a review, she reviewed literature. There was something I wanted to, uh,
Thank you. The next speaker is Lacey Hollings.
Uh, thank you to the board for letting me speak and thank you to Board Member Caprice Edmonds for voting against, uh, the adoption of the policy. Um, I'd like to point out that no one is suggesting this book should be in elementary schools or even middle schools. This book is intended for advanced students in AP English or AP Literature or IB classes. This is an advanced book. However, in, life is messy. Life is hard. One in six women will face sexual assault in their lifetime. Up to 20% of women in the United States have suffered incest. This is something that our students face. So ignoring it and saying that they shouldn't read about it is simply putting your head in the sand. I read this book when I was 18. Our seniors are 18. They're not minors. They're adults. They can serve in the military. They can buy cigarettes. They can go to jail. They should be able to read a difficult text, especially one that has great literary value. That we should trust our teachers. They are professionals. And when we don't trust our teachers, when we harass and harangue them and, and just make it difficult for them, they leave. And that's why we have vacancies all over the school corporation. That's why we can't find teachers. That's why they leave after three years. Because of this crap. And it is crap. So stop making it hard on teachers and librarians. Let the literature stay. This is not that hard. This book talks about bullying and how devastating that is and its crushing effects. And it teaches empathy. And maybe if some of these people had read the whole book, they would have some empathy. So none of the school boards have lost their funding for implementing face masks policies in the last year, even though Tallahassee threatened that. So don't be afraid of losing your funding because you keep books in the schools. You have the right to do that. Local control of education always comes from the local school board. It doesn't come from the state. It comes from the local school board. And your rights as a parent stop when they interfere with my rights as a parent to have my child have a good education and go to college with a good foundation of learning. So please do not trample on my rights as a parent. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Philip Bel Castro and Ramsey Aziz.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Philip Bel Castro. I teach 11th grade English at St. Pete High. I actually do teach the, um, ACE Cambridge International course for us. Um, I do, before I want to begin, I do want to say that when I was in high school, the girl that I dated then and for many years after was raped repeatedly by her father. And because her father was a sitting councilperson in a small town in Florida, he never faced any consequences. And I will say unequivocally that English teachers and literature, specifically Toni Morrison, saved that girl's life. So, being so busy being a teacher, doing my job, I wasn't even really aware that we were being called groomers and indoctrinators. I was pretty surprised. They're calling us, "What? Who said that?" Goodness gracious. If we were incapable of indoctrinating anybody to do anything, I guarantee you the very first thing I would indoctrinate them to do, indoctrinate my students to do, is to stop using their phones for TikTok and actually use it for schoolwork. And if anybody here is an elementary teacher, can you please start indoctrinating that as soon as possible? And maybe while you're at it, indoctrinate them how to use Microsoft Word and make my job a little bit easier before they get to 11th grade. I want to share some nice things with you guys that my bosses have said about me. Here are just a few notes and cards that I've saved over the past few years from students that I look at daily to remind my, remind me why I even do this job. "You've had the most impact in my life, more than other teachers. I'll never forget the comfort your classroom gave me. I'm so thankful that I got to have such an amazing English teacher and I'm so lucky to have been taught by you. You're always cheerful, funny, and that makes me happy too. You're the most wonderful teacher I've ever had. Thank you for being a great teacher and an awesome person to be around. You made English fun and I hate English. You somehow made English class feel like a comedy show, yet also a nice chat with a friend just by being yourself. Coming into my first year of in-person high school, I had low expectations. I thought it was going to dread, I was going to dread my time at school, but you actually made me look forward to it. Thank you for staying late after school with me so many days to play guitar or just to talk. As a teacher, you're always busy, but you still took extra time to care about your students. It's one of my favorites. Your job is to shape the next generation as soon as the world will be in our hands. You've done an exceptional job of preparing us. You've given me confidence in my own skills and I have a better idea of who I want to be now. Thank you for all the encouragement, help, and reassurance even when I skipped all the time." So, she was a good kid. Still is. So for anybody who's unsure what is going on in our classrooms, I invite you to become substitute teachers and find out for yourself. We can use the help and soon Florida's going to need a whole lot more of them. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, members of the school board. I want to thank all the members of, uh, this board for their time and attention. My name is Ramsey Aziz. I am a first-year teacher at St. Pete High. I teach AP Psychology, AP European History, Anthropology honors, as well as Humanities honors. I'm here to speak today to speak up for the students in my classroom as well as myself and my coworkers who are actively being attacked and punished by the state for participating in the public education system in the state of Florida. Currently, the state of Florida is, is experiencing one of the largest teacher shortages in the nation. As a new teacher, when I first began, I felt intimidated by the amount of work and lack of training I received. I would get to school at 6:00 AM most days and stay until 5:00 or 6:00 PM every day to work on making students' materials as well, as well as I would work on weekends, uh, to grade and find activities to catch my students up as I started mid-year. Uh, the fact I was able to earn this opportunity to even become a teacher as a 22-year-old who graduated only a month prior to my start date is indicative of our problem, even though I am very grateful for the opportunity. Teachers and teachers' organizations working in the state are actively being demonized and slandered by politicians who are striving towards a particular, a particular agenda, the privatization of education. Why is, why is it that Governor DeSantis is targeting teachers' unions unlike firefighter unions and police unions? The fact that Governor Ron DeSantis and individuals in his staff, such as Press Secretary Christina Pushaw, has called us groomers and indoctrin, indoctrinators is despicable. This will only lead to further departures of teachers within the Florida education system and worsen the shortage. There is a culture war that is being fueled by Florida's politicians that is not in the interest of parents, students, or teachers. Instead of anti-woke agenda, why is the state not supporting teachers in pursuit of their identity and self-expression? Why is the state so focused on this particular agenda rather than supporting teachers and schools by establishing smaller class sizes, less preps, better training for new staff, more planning, and fair wages? While I truly have a passion for teaching, I became incredibly burnt out very quickly. And if it was not for my will and passion and the support system I established, I would not have been able to continue this, in this position. Why is the state putting their hands on the school system for niche issues rather than solve, rather than solving major problems? Why is the state not working towards supporting teachers to improve working conditions or students to promote self-expression? To end this speech, I wish to elaborate on why I became a teacher. I wish to teach my students how to strive above the mediocrity and complacency of our age. I strive to teach them how to attain their will to power, the capacity for betterment, so that they are able to become so absolutely free that their, that their very existence is an act of rebellion. P.S., the gender, the gender-bred man is not a real book.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, next two speakers are Amy Kelly and Simon Phillips.
Hi, my name is Amy Kelly. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. These are tough acts to follow and I appreciate all the teachers who are here expressing their passion. My topic is a little less controversial, but also related. I think everyone's passion here demonstrates the extent to which public schools are the, the fabric with which our society is woven. And my kids go to Shore Acres Elementary. I know we just talked about MBM, Mangrove Bay Middle. Um, and I'm here to advocate for Shore Acres to have a feeder pattern into Mangrove Middle. I've spoken to Mr. Arabic. How are you? Um, partly because of that community. There is a great community around Shore Acres Elementary and we could bring that community to MBM and I think it would be a great asset to the school. You guys have all seen how active our parent community is. We could help make the new middle school very, very successful. In addition, I know we've talked about, a little bit about, privatization of schools. I think what we've, what we saw last year statistically, 12% of the fifth graders attrited to the private schools. Whether or not that's part of a grand or plan, I'm not sure. I think anecdotally, I'm understanding my daughter's in the fifth grade, there's going to be larger than a 12% attrition to the private schools and that represents a loss of revenue for the school itself. So I know that people are sending y'all letters. We'll continue to send you letters and I'd like to advocate for Shore Acres to have a feeder priority to Mangrove Bay Middle. Thank you.
She just took all of my lines. I'm Simon Phillips. Nice to meet you, by the way. Thanks for your time this evening. Um, first time in front of the board, so I appreciate the time and the opportunity to do so. And also wanted to reiterate the passion for teachers, what they do. I'm actually in corporate education, so I work with a different audience of adults instead of the adolescents. But I'm also here to advocate too for the priority of Shore Acres to feed to the now Mangrove Bay Elementary or Middle, excuse me. And I wanted maybe then just add a little twist to this on an experience that I had as opposed to the more fact of the matter. Of course, if you were there at the opening today of the Y, you were really right next to Shore Acres Elementary and it's sort of surprising to me that it wouldn't be a natural feeder. Seeing that the students afterwards are going to other schools post-elementary to me was a little concerning. So I grew up outside of Florida where you go to your zone school, there is no magnet and there is no this. You went K through 12 in the same program. And to me, what was in hindsight was the most important thing is community. And I heard that a lot today that was being spoke of. And the kids are now having to go to different programs and they're breaking that sense of community. We just left a magnet program after four years because of some very unsettling experiences that we had at the school with the different groups that are being fed together. There were the sense of interpersonal conflict, logistical conflict, buses, whatever the case may be. So making the decision to go to Shore Acres down the road was very important to us, realizing that we are missing the sense of community. Now, just learning that they not, may not be able to go down to the middle school down the road was a little concerning because these are the kids that they go to school with, church with, activities. They're all there together. And if these kids don't understand why, why do I have to go to another school now? Why, why can't I do this? It's unfair to them. So I would just like to reiterate the consideration to have Shore Acres directly feed into the Mangrove Bay Middle and YMCA, I guess we'll call it now Spear YMCA, was that what you heard? So, thank you very much for your time.
The next two speakers are Connie Glasgow and Lindsay Blankenbaker.
Hi, I had no intentions of speaking. I found myself coming here and the entire time I'm driving here, I'm thinking to myself, "Why are you coming to this meeting? Why are you coming to this meeting?" I taught 38 years in Pinellas County and retired and currently I'm a paralegal. That was my career after, that's a career I chose to do, um, after my teaching career. And I can say I had the most memorable experiences teaching, I'm going to start crying, in Pinellas County. Not only from the leadership that I, you know, God, from, um, curriculum and development, technology. Um, you're an absolutely wonderful superintendent and it's just fantastic that you're in the position you're in. But the more I sat here and listened and the more I thought about it, I thought, "Okay, you know why I'm here? Because I am sick to death of listening to others in the community in the paper, um, on social media bashing teachers in Pinellas County." And it, it, it just seems to come from, like, there seems to be a resistance in the community which was never there in the time that I was here. And, um, first I want to address the book, their, uh, the book issue real quickly. That is like almost a moot subject because the, the state of Florida has already enacted a statute and, um, media specialists and anybody else who are, who were apprised of the, there's court questions and rubric, rubrics from the state. So if parents aren't happy with a book that's being presented, there's a process that they need to go through. Instead of coming to these meetings and wasting people's time talking about it, there's no more talking about it. Find the procedure and do it. And Ms. Ms. Meyer, I'm, don't know if I'm saying your name correctly or not, you suggested that these parents can go home and read these, these kids can go to the library. I'm here to tell you, kids don't, parents don't often take children to libraries. And if I have to see what Manatee County has, is, is doing, has done, it brought tears to my eyes and I hope to God it doesn't happen in Pinellas County, where elementary school teachers are packing up library books and, and putting them away for fear of having been a third-degree felony. Um, and I'm tired of blanket statements like somebody mentioned over here. There's issues in the district. Name them, name them already. And the last thing I want to say before I close, which went real fast, was, um, in the Tampa Bay Times, October 19th, 2022, I just, uh, want to remind Don Peters that you, you said, and I quote, "I signed a pledge to the parents of the state of Florida that I follow everything Governor DeSantis has put in place and teach," and I just want you to know that you don't work for him. You work for Pinellas County. And if it weren't for the teachers and the taxpayers here, you wouldn't have a job. And Stephanie Meyer, you said the teachers should stick to that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lindsay Blankenbaker.
Uh, good evening. My name is Lindsay Blankenbaker. I am the very proud executive director of PCTA and PESPA. I join previous speakers in thanking you for returning to live-stream public comment. And I've spoken here before to ask you to carefully consider just what we risk when we indulge an increasingly broad and patently partisan definition of the word controversy. Democracy requires debate. You'll hear no argument from me on that, but debate is different from demagoguery. The word controversy itself appeals to its root word, ver, or truth. Historically and socially, little has been given more credit or credence than an individual's name, their identity, who they say they are. I use the appropriate singular pronoun with emphasis. As a former educator and with only the most cursory of searches, I find it necessary to correct tonight's revisionist history of that word. In fact, easily found online, historians find the original use or the first use of the singular they in the English language dates back to the 14th century. I'm sorry that some who made that comment are not here to hear mine, but I get it. These comments were not offered as bona fide corrections, but instead as cynical jabs against the people, adults, against the people, adults, children, people, who introduce themselves as "they." Words matter. They have an impact, a potentially lifelong one. Identity, history, human rights, these are truth, not controversy. When we treat discrimination and dragging as debate, when we elevate that to the level of legitimate controversy, as has now been done at the highest level of state leadership, this hurts people. This hurts children, our children. We, our schools, our district, our unions, this board, board members, both new and experienced, we must do better than this. Rather than erring on the side of caution, we must stand firm in truth. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Karen Perez and Anna Margiotta.
My name is Dr. Anna Margiotta. I am a chemistry teacher at St. Petersburg High School and a graduate of Pinellas County Schools. After I graduated high school in spring 2013, I started my BA in chemistry and graduated two and a half years later. In August 2016, I started attending the University of Northern Colorado, where I first got my MS in chemistry and then my PhD in chemical education in August 2022. Before finishing my PhD program, I started looking for jobs in Pinellas County schools because I wanted to come home and share my new expertise. I accepted my job at St. Pete High School in May 2022. I know that being 27 with a PhD is impressive. I know how much work all of what I did took, and I know that I'm working harder now. The teachers in our schools have incredible dedication to do what they do every day. The severe teacher shortage is evidence of the dedication needed to stay. Teachers need more support. We need smaller class sizes, less preps, and more respect. The shortage is only going to get worse. I encourage every teacher to pursue their dreams because I know they have the dedication to achieve them. Leave if that's what you want. Find more respect. Do whatever you want to do. I know that you can. I want to emphasize how much I want to be a teacher. When I completed my drive to Florida, my principal was one of the first people I called. I visited my classroom and campus for the first time the next day. I have worked very hard to get to this point. I want the job I have to help take care of my community. I love my students with all my heart, and I know I am good at my job, but the lack of support and hateful anti-woke rhetoric makes it hard for me to stay. We need to condemn the villainization of teachers and stop this anti-woke agenda. Through gaining a PhD, you gain expertise in an incredibly specific area of your field. My expertise is in evidence-based equity in chemical education. That's the title of my dissertation. The staff and faculty at schools need to include people with many different perspectives. This is so students can learn from people who are different from themselves and so they could find people to relate to. In a recent study, Oliver et al., 2021, indicated that lack of representation among role models in the classroom may negatively affect recruitment of students of color into STEM. Similarly, Greaves et al., 2022, reported that a lack of representation amongst students and faculty contributed to an achievement gap. Students need representation in the classroom. I am a non-binary person, and I use they/them pronouns. I did not figure this out until I was in college because I did not learn through Pinellas County Schools or through my family that non-binary people existed. I think that if I had a teacher like me, a transgender person, my life would have been better. I'm not a groomer. I'm a good teacher. I love my students, and I need explicit support from my school board. We need to protect the transgender teachers we have, and I want our community to be trans-friendly for me and my students. Thank you and good evening.
Karen Perez. The next speaker is Kelsey Donigan.
I'm sorry, are you still waiting on Karen Perez?
No, she's not here.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelsey Donigan. I am a first-year teacher at St. Petersburg High School. I teach 9th and 10th grade English. I really love my job. I came very quickly to find a love for education. My mom taught in Tampa and Pinellas for around 40 years. She just recently retired, and it was her experience that made me go, "I will not be a teacher." And then I kept gravitating toward it, and then when I started doing it, I realized how much I really loved this position. I started in early October, in the middle of the year, to kids who had a class taught by substitutes for two months. The teacher that was hired before me had quit after a single day on the job. The most common thing I heard in my first week at St. Pete High was, "Hi, nice to meet you, so glad you're here. Please don't quit." Bringing teenagers to order in a class that hadn't had a teacher in months was a challenging task, and I'm genuinely very proud of the measurable improvements, both in behavior and their ability to read and understand the material they're reading that I've accomplished with them. Quitting's never been a thought in my mind, but quickly I saw firsthand some of the reasons our county, state, and country are facing a teacher shortage. The main thing I'd like to talk about tonight is our class sizes. I think that's one of the biggest things that could help with teacher retention. In the state of Florida, the maximum class size is supposed to be 24 students. That is, I have one class that is 24 students. It's my first period. The rest of my day is anywhere from the high 20s to the 34 is my highest class size. My classroom's not very big. With 34 kids in there, it is a crowded room that's difficult to navigate around, and it makes it difficult to be able to teach in that situation. Obviously, I understand with a lack of teachers, we have to be able to put these kids somewhere, but when you have teachers coming into these crowded classrooms, I think that's why we're seeing the revolving door culture we're currently seeing. I'd like to, with the little bit of time I have left, address what the Bill Mrs. Edmund asked for clarification on. Thank you for voting no on that, by the way. I just finished Animal Farm, and I'm currently teaching Fahrenheit 451, and both of these books could easily be banned under the vague descriptions that passed with. So I'd like more clarification on what we should be focusing on, I guess in terms of what we're not allowed to talk about, but I'm out of time. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, there are no more speakers.
With that, we want to thank you all for attending today's meeting and have a wonderful evening. The board will now perform its meeting evaluation. Thank you and good evening.